You're going to call to order the, I'm sorry, the city council meeting for the Trover City Council, March 28th, 2022 at approximately 6:11 PM. Sorry for the delay.
Recording in progress.
Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Here.
Glasher?
Here.
Redwell?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
Passy?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Brennan?
Here.
Pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Once again, I'm going to ask everybody that's on Zoom, please make sure that your microphone is muted so that we have the best opportunity to get through our meeting. Thank you. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to request that we change the language for consent agenda item number 13 as follows. Motion that the interim employment agreement between the City of Two Harbors and Joel Dine be approved and executed by the mayor, subject to contingent on and effective on the date of completion of a satisfactory background check, and that the council president, Ben Redden, be designated as the city council designee under this agreement. In addition, I would like to request that we move consent agenda item number 14, accepting the recommendation of the Ad Hoc Committee on Ethics, to refer to the Public Affairs Committee a proposal to amend the city code to prohibit social media accounts for the City of Two Harbors elected officials, and that should be moved to new business number 11. Moving consent agenda item number five to new business 12, which reads authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver an independent contractor agreement with Jose Leon to provide public address and public access coordinator and camera operator services for the city. And moving number six from consent agenda to item number 13 out of new business, which reads authorizing the mayor and clerk to execute and deliver the Minnesota Department of Transportation Agency Agreement for federal airport expense reimbursements in the amount of $32,000. And that is all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
All right. I'm looking for a motion for approval of the agenda this evening.
So move second.
And I'm going to do a roll call on that due to one of our members being online. Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glasher?
Yes.
Redwell?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Passy?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Redden?
Yes.
All right. Next, I'm looking for a motion adjuring the regular meeting and calling to order a public hearing for the purpose of considering the ordering of sidewalk improvements on 8th Street from 4th Avenue to 2nd Avenue, both sides, 2nd Avenue from 7th Street to 8th Street, both sides, 4th Avenue from 6th Street to 7th Street on the north side only, and 5th Avenue from 6th Street to 7th Street, south side only. So move second. Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glasher?
Yes.
Redwell?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Passy?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Redden?
Yes. We are now in our public hearing, and the appearances tonight are Miranda Pietta,
interim administrator, finance director regarding the proposed project.
Thank you, council president, members of the council. Good evening. Tonight is our public assessment hearing for the 2022 Sidewalk Improvement Project. This is by far the largest crowd I have ever presented to, so please bear with me. Glad to see so many faces here tonight. With me is our interim public works director, Jim Gilbert, who has really, we've just worked together as a team for this, and he's done a really good job of picking out these sidewalks. I'm just going to go over a project summary of where we are right now. So the city council directed the staff on February 28th of 2022 to prepare a feasibility report for the 2022 Sidewalk Improvement Project. We had started this process probably about two years ago, based on recommendations from the city council for sidewalks, construction, repair, maintenance, and we adopted a revised policy in November 9th of 2020. This is our second year in the project. Year one, we worked on Ward 1, and this year, the projects were based in Ward 2. We're concentrating on the corridor along A Street from 4th Avenue to 2nd Avenue, 2nd Avenue from 7th Street to A Street, 4th Avenue from 6th Street to 7th Street on the north side only, 5th Avenue from 6th to 7th Street on the south side only. The sidewalks were chosen based on geographic proximity and their condition. The budget for the project was about $140,000. The project costs actually came to about $150,975. The project in report is prepared in accordance with Section 429.031. So this is a map of the portion of the A Street project, or the A Street portion, from 4th Avenue to 2nd Avenue. Then, this is a map of the 2nd Avenue from 7th Street to A Street, and then 4th Avenue from 6th Street to 7th Street on the north side only, and then 5th Avenue from 6th Street to 7th Street on the south side only. The existing conditions, existing sidewalks to be replaced were in poor fair condition, and Jim Gilbert had done a field verify in October of 2021 to go over that project area. And with that, had worked closely with the Public Works Committee, with touching base and seeing what was important in that ward. So here are some pictures on the A Street of what we were looking at from 4th Avenue to 2nd Avenue, and then 2nd Avenue from 7th Street to A Street, 4th Avenue from 6th Street to 7th Street on the north side, and then 5th Avenue from 6th Street to 7th on the south side. So the proposed improvements, we had existing sidewalks that will be demolished or removed, graded, formed, and new sidewalks poured. The disturbed areas will be graded with topsoil, seeded and covered with straw. The pedestrian ramps, where the ADA requirements, will be installed at the intersections at the city cost. The contractor will also repair the three alley aprons on A Street between 4th and 2nd Avenue. The total number of accessible squares will be 603, and the number of corner and alley squares will be an additional 68, with a total project of 671 squares. The work will begin on or before June 2022 with a completion by the end of September 2022. The work will be completed by the contractor, except for setting the alley grade, which will be done by the city staff. So the estimated cost, the total construction estimate of 671 squares, that is $225 per square, with a total project of $150,975. The accessible portion to benefiting property owners is $50 per square at 603 squares. The accessible portion then is $31,150. The portion covered by the City of Two Harbors is $120,825. The assessments to benefiting property owners range from $250 to $2,000, depending on the number of squares. The detailed cost estimates are provided in Appendix B of the feasibility report, which will be available once the council adopts it tonight, online or at City Hall upon request. The city portion of the project will be funded through the Capital Equipment Fund. Assessments can be paid in full at the end of the project, or assessed to the property over a five-year period, and that's with a bond rate plus 1%. The proposed improvement is necessary, cost-effective, and feasible. So the assessment portion of that project, so Minnesota law allows the city to assign a portion of public improvement cost to benefit of properties, and that's Chapter 429, Special Assessments. The City of Two Harbors has an official sidewalk, construction, repair, maintenance policy that was adopted by the city council in March of 2020, and then that was revised November 9th of 2020. The assessments that we have in the feasibility report tonight are only the preliminary estimates. Each property owner does have a right to object to the assessment. The objection to the assessments would be at the final hearing, which will be sometime in October, November of 2022, after the final assessments are notified, and prior to the closing of the assessment hearing. So each property owner has rights under Chapter 429. You have the right to object to the assessment. The objection must be filed in writing and must be submitted prior to the closing of that hearing. The property owners who have objected to assessments may then proceed with formal appeal of an assessment, and the appeal must be filed within 30 days of a public hearing. Proposed assessments cannot exceed the increase in market value of the property due to the improvement. So our proposed project schedule, we had, the city council directed the staff to proceed with the project, and that was in February 28th. The city council received, receives feasibility report and schedules the improvement hearing on March 14th. Tonight, we are having that hearing, the improvement hearing, and then tonight, if the council allows it, we will order the improvements, and then we will also award the construction contract. And then, after that, we would begin the construction in June or July of 2022. Then we would order the preparation of the assessment roll sometime in September. After that project is completed, we'd order the assessment hearing and send out notices to all those homeowners that were affected, and then the city council will hold that final assessment hearing sometime in October. And that concludes the presentation. So if anybody has any questions or for discussion?
We have questions. You have to go to the mic, I'm sorry, and give your name and address.
I'm Donna Ranta, 2028th Street, and I am curious as to why we are going ahead with sidewalk repairs instead of doing the street and the sidewalks at the same time. So we are going to be assessed two different kinds of two projects. Another thing I'd like to say on that is the semis we are getting from the brewery, pounding the heck out of our street, and I do think it's also the railroad on A Street, but there is times we have seen five to six semis, 16-wheelers, coming down 2nd Avenue. My next question is why are we skipping 3rd Avenue?
The sidewalks? The sidewalks are going from, we're going to do the sidewalks from A Street, or down A Street, they're going to go from 4th Avenue all the way to 2nd Avenue.
Oh, to 2nd Avenue, okay.
Just to continue that corridor, because A Street from that, from 4th to 2nd, isn't on the radar for many years, and as all of you who have walked down there have noticed, it's really bad.
And this winter, it really got pounded with those semis coming through. We've got school buses, and we've got all these pounding out our street, and we have to pay for it.
Yeah, and this is just the sidewalk. This won't, if something were to come up where A Street got moved up the schedule or whatever, you guys would get prorated on whatever was done to that sidewalk part of it. But as far as now, A Street is not even in the, I would say, the next 10 years, just looking at projects that I have seen. As far as the semis and stuff like that, I guess we should probably have a little conversation with the brewery and see if there's a different route that we can get them to run.
I have, I can't say that I have seen the railroad so much during the day, but in the evening is where I have seen them come by with very big dumpsters. Also, this winter, the city dump trucks were hauling snow removal and just pounding the heck out of our street.
Yeah, and that's, well, we dumped down in that bottom corner there, so that's the easiest route for us to get up, and in the wintertime, it's frozen, so we're not really actually...
But you're making a lot of potholes.
Adrian Ranta, 2028th Street. I'm the one that, I got the 40 squares to have the biggest assessment. And now the sidewalk on 8th, or on 2nd Avenue, front of my place, there's nothing wrong with that sidewalk. So I'm paying for, to remove a big sidewalk. I got, out of the 40 square, I think I got 18 squares there.
Just going off, when we decided to go, when we do an avenue, we're shrinking everything down to five feet now on the avenue sides. So that's probably, I would get, that's one reason why we're going in there, and if we're going to do it, we're going to make the whole thing match and be uniform.
So I'm paying to pull up a good sidewalk.
Which, I've been there, and there's, yeah, like you said, there are some good ones in there.
There's one crack, and that crack's been there from the day they put the sidewalk in. Totally different than on that side. And then on the map, you don't know you're doing 3rd Avenue, you know, right up from me. It's got 2nd, and then gets 3rd and goes to 4th.
Yeah, no, it's supposed to, it's from 2nd to 4th. Yeah, because 4th's already been done.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you ask about the city trail? Don't do any good anyway.
Any other...
Can I ask, can I ask a question, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I guess, and maybe Jim can answer this, I don't know if Joe's on there, but are these, is this, the 40 squares that Mr. Ranta was discussing, are those some sidewalks that have been done in the past? Or, because if they've been assessed already once for them, do we, don't we have a policy to look into how we deal with that? I'm just asking a question.
There is, but as far, as long as I've been here, I don't remember doing sidewalks.
That, on that side?
On either side there.
Okay. I'm just curious, maybe we can look into that, or maybe Public Works could look into that. I know there was some questions from some of our residents in the A Street project that were also concerned about having sidewalks redone after they'd already done them, or they'd had, built an overlay, I don't remember what it was. I know we got a copy of the letter again tonight. I'm just wondering if Public Works could look into those things, because I certainly would hope that we could find a way to decrease the cost if people have already been assessed at one point or another.
Yes, and I do want to point out that at Public Works meeting this last, past week, we had, you know, we're going to be completing the 2021 and 2022 street improvement project, and, you know, we're very thoughtful of those high costs that go into that, and people that maybe have paid assessments previously. So we're taking a really good look at our special assessment policy, and we can add the sidewalk policy along with that, because, you know, tonight is just a preliminary number that, you know, an estimate, and that is not finalized until we have that final assessment hearing in November or October or November of this year. So we do have time to make adjustments to that policy that would affect, you know, that final cost.
Thank you. I appreciate that explanation, and I know this, whenever anybody is hearing the word assessments, everybody gets panic-stricken. I know I do, because when you live on a street in a corner, you could get it on three different, in three different directions. So I know we've had this discussion in the past, and I thank you for bringing that back to Public Affairs, or Public Works, excuse me.
Go ahead, Debbie.
I know we discussed this with Joe Rain at one of our meetings, and he did look back, not necessarily on the avenues that you're speaking about, on the one that Robin was speaking of.
Yeah.
And there's a lifetime, I mean, expectancy for a sidewalk, and the assessments, the folks that have been there long enough to remember that they were already assessed once for a sidewalk. This, I believe, went beyond that, so they do take that into effect if there is a sidewalk that has been replaced, say maybe it only been for five years, they deduct the depreciation, that type of thing, and they account for that. Joe works that out for us. I've looked at that before. So I just, I know that we're coming for that.
Yeah, that is part of our policy. So like I said, we'll be just taking a bigger look at that for any changes, and we'll definitely address that when we have our final hearings in November.
Do we have any communications about this public hearing?
Mr. Chair, I'm receiving all communications. Thank you.
All right. If there's no other questions from the council, I will...
We should ask, just to make sure again, that there's anyone wishes to speak for or against.
Sure.
Just to make sure that we got...
Sure. If there's anyone else in the public that wishes to speak for or against the sidewalk projects, please step forward. Anybody else? All right. I wanted to take a motion to adjourn the public hearing and go back to resuming our regular council meeting.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glasher?
Yes.
Redwell?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Passy?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Redden?
Yes.
All right. We've adjourned a public hearing and a re-convening, the regular meeting of the City of Two Harbors City Council. Next up, we have appearances. Before everybody appears, I just ask that we all remain a respectful environment of where people are sharing thoughts, but respect is key, especially in this council chambers.
Mr. Chair, could I just give my report quickly?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Actually, I'm sorry about that.
I'm going to turn this around, because I see a lot of new faces here today. So for those of you who don't know me, I'm Jennifer Sturbinz, and I'm the community development planner slash city planner for the city. One of the fun part of my job is I get to work on projects. And in Two Harbors, we have a lot of young entrepreneurs. I see Kelly and Ashley sitting here, so I've worked with them. So that makes it fun. I get to see these young kids doing these projects from start to finish. But tonight, I want to talk a little bit about some projects that are going on downtown. So last year, we had a business open called Port City Nutrition, and we had a young entrepreneur by the name Quinn Casell. This business is on the northwest end of 1st Avenue, and Quinn opened up a health shake place. They remodeled the building. It's really nice. You can go in there. It's quiet, bright. They have a counter where you can sit there, and on any given day, Quinn is there making shakes. And then, we also had last year, the Harbor Rail Loft and Events, and that was Donna and Chris. And if you were ever upstairs of that building before it was redone, or during the construction, you wouldn't even believe it was the same building. They put a lot of work into it. It looks wonderful. You can look online under Harbor Rail Events, and you'll see there, you can see everything that they did up there. And then, unintentionally, Harbor Rail Pub evolved. And so they're open now, and they have a pub menu. They're doing live music there. They've had karaoke, numerous things. So that's been a fun place, a fun project to be involved in. And then, now, over the last year, we've had another project going on. It's called the Tipsy Mosquito Wine Bar, and that's going to be located right next door to Port City Nutrition. That one is ready to go. It's, the majority of that project is privately funded. She's going to have a full bar and then some light appetizers to go with that one. And what I love about this project is it's unique, and all of these projects are really producing some foot traffic downtown. So people used to come and just go to Castle Danger and leave. Now, people can go to Castle Danger and get an experience. They can go across to the Moose, walk down the street. They'll go to Tipsy Mosquito and have a different experience. And then they can go to the Legion and have a much different experience, and they can go down to Harbor Rail Pub and see live music and have another experience. And so, all of these projects together, they get people walking from Castle Danger all the way down to the pub. Just these small projects that keep popping up. They're local people. They are vested in the city. They want to create a nice downtown. They want to see people out walking about. I know this project, the Tipsy Mosquito, has had an application into the Two Harbors Development Fund since December. We just heard back last week, Friday, I think. They're going to look at the application this week, and I'm hoping that the Development Fund will see the value in this project like I do, and will approve this request and get this project going, because this will be a fun one. And so I think, not only, I think that this is a good step to develop in the waterfront as well, because it's getting people downtown. It's giving people a reason to stay, and it's also sparking more development downtown. And these are the kind of projects that we should be embracing, because they are the kind of projects that are, they're getting people downtown after 5 o'clock, when the insurance companies and the banks close, and they're getting people to come to the communities. So I just wanted to mention those projects, and please support those businesses downtown. And then I just wanted to mention, too, that it's building permit season, and so you have to have a building permit to do any projects, but you also need a land use permit. So if you're putting up a shed, a fence, a garage, anything like that, you not only need a building permit, but you need a land use permit. So if you have any questions about that, you can call me, or you can go on the website under the Planning Department, and you can get the information there, too. Does the council have any questions for me? Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just want to say thanks for all the hard work you're doing, and anybody that's in business here, keep up the good work. Businesses are the backbone of the community. And I love all the restoration, all the beautiful things that are happening, all the opportunities people are getting for jobs and for great products and services. So thanks, Jen, for your service.
Yeah, thank you. One more thing I want to mention. Thanks, Mary, you reminded me. So another project worth mentioning downtown, too, is the 630 Lofts, and those are Christine and John McCarthy. They remodeled the upstairs of the North Shore Architectural Antique Store. They have three units completed, and all three units have been rented out. They're long-term rentals. They've been rented out to people who are working in the community. So they were used for workforce housing. They preserve the integrity of the historical character up there. So there's high ceilings, there's exposed brick, there's woodwork, there's a laundry facility in there, there's a little community gathering place in the bottom. So they've really done a great job on those, too. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Along with the other appearances, we will follow simple rules as last week. You each have three minutes to speak. I'll have time of going when the alarm goes off, kindly step down from the podium, and no yielding your time to other people, just the people that are on as far as appearances this evening. We'll start out with appearance number one, Ralph Jacobson, City of Two Harbors. We'll start out with appearance number one, Ralph Jacobson, from the future of Two Harbors.
Thank you very much, Council, Mr. Mayor, President.
Excuse me, Mr. Jacobson, can you give your name and address for the record, please? The rec, the rec, the address.
Ralph Jacobson, 601 Valley Road.
Thank you.
One-eighth dollar house in Two Harbors. This morning I got up and I turned the TV on and I was looking at it and I think the Pope had the right words for our community and for our nation and for our world and this is what he said, "It is time for humanity to overcome hostilities." We've seen enough hostility in our world and in our United States, excuse me, the last five years, we've seen nothing but hostility. We see the war going on in Russia and Ukraine, Ukraine, and on TV the last week, about three days ago, grandma was referring to the war as the people of Ukraine and the people of Russia are not against each other, it's good and it's evil that are fighting in versus, we all know that good is God and evil is Satan that's going to destroy. We have a Dr. Shusha who is a doctor from, who lives in Ukraine, comes at Johns Hopkins University, he's also a member of, or president of a Gideon organization with the Luthe and we called to find out how he was because he'd been at our group and spoke in the Luthe and he said, "I have some Gideon New Testament, so I, in between the shellings that go on, I run out and I give the Russian soldiers a New Testament." Does that speak volumes to you? Don't you think we need a little more love in our community? And if we let and if we allow the hatred that has built up in our community to go on, I'm supposed to speak on the future of Two Harbors, there will be no future of Two Harbors, it'll be at each other's throat constantly. Last time I was here, I was invited to come, a friend of mine called me and asked me, "Are you going to the council meeting?" I said, "What on earth would I go to the council meeting for?" Well, there's some issues, I think you should be interested in this, see. I came down and I saw disrespect at the highest hill. The lady that spoke with the classmate of my kids, they swam together, they had fun together, we respected her, she helped me and for the Sons of Norway to get a place up at the Split Rock for the, our group to come and pick me, worked wonderfully, sweet, kind, lovable and I saw nothing but hostility and hatred. Todd Running, we sang together at the community center, our community choir and I wanted to sit by him all the time because he has such a gorgeous, beautiful voice and...
Sorry, sir.
I saw something that I cannot live happening in the United States, so people can change their attitudes and go from, to hatred and say things that are absolutely untrue.
Excuse me, sir.
We have a mayor that is a...
Time's up.
Am I done?
Oh, yeah. Thank you, my apologies.
All right, next we have Tim Jazurski, already progressed, he's made.
Tim Jazurski, I live at 1949 Highway 2. My name is Tim Jazurski, I've lived in Two Harbors area for almost 30 years now, I've been involved in political campaigns for most of my adult life, every campaign talks about infrastructure and its importance, yet our roads and bridges are in disrepair. So I want to start by saying thanks to this council mayor for not only making an infrastructure plan, but actually following the plan. Not everyone is happy, of course, because their street isn't first, but keep working your plan and things will work out well. This is a sign that, of cooperation between the mayor and the council, it doesn't happen without that. This full cooperation is showing in many other areas as well. Your working together to create a business-friendly environment has us looking at almost every business building being filled instead of empty buildings up and down our streets. In the last few years, we've had two major corporations invest in our community, we've had QuickTrip and Domino's, we've had local businesses expand like Segren's and the dental clinic next door, many investing in building remodels as well. You've also jumped on opportunities when they have come along, like the Tall Ships Festival, these things do not happen in a small town when the government is not functioning well. Now we have a small group trying to disrupt this cooperation, whether out of jealousy, partisan politics, or both, they're willing to take your focus off of the good works that you are doing due to accusations. They along with a failing newspaper that is resorting to tabloid-like behavior, one that does not seem to learn anything from the Nick Sandman lawsuits, together they're just throwing mud against the wall hoping something sticks. Together they have brought Washington-style DC-style politics to Two Harbors, they've not only attacked the mayor and his family, but nonprofits and businesses as well. This type of cancel culture politics has no place in our community. Now I'm not saying we ignore concerns that come up, I, what I am saying is we look at them, see if they have merit and deal with them, but don't stop what you are doing because of them. If you let that happen, remember, you could be the next target. Remember, accusations are just that, accusations. Keep up the cooperation and keep Two Harbors moving forward. Thanks for your time.
Next we have Pastor Jim Joseph, already the issues we are facing in our community.
Pastor Jim Joseph, I think, live at Bible 7, Seventh Avenue. If the businesses are the backbone of the community, the church is the heart of the community. And as I look, I see a group of people on two sides of an issue that all proclaim themselves Christian, I think that's a fair statement. I pray with many of you, I pray for all of you. We need to understand that the greatest value, the greatest law is the law of love. The Bible says, "You will love the Lord your God with all your heart, soul, mind, and strength, and you will love your neighbor as yourself." But it says to Christians, Jesus said to Christians, to his followers, "You are to love one another as I have loved you." How did Jesus love us? He took our sins upon us, upon himself, to die for us. Jesus was brought a woman who was caught in the very act of adultery and what he said to her, I think we all need to hear. He got down on the ground and he wrote, "They wanted to stone her to death," it was the law, they had the right to stone her to death. He simply said, "Let the one who is without sin cast a first stone." And the only one there without sin was Jesus himself and what did he say? "Neither do I condemn you, go and sin no more." We pray the Lord's prayer, "Father, forgive us our sins like we forgive those who sin against us." And Jesus was clear when he said, "If we do not forgive men their sins from our heart, neither will our Father in heaven forgive us." I am not debating whether the mayor should be recalled or not, I believe in the political process, I think it's fine, if people think he should be recalled, they should go through the proper process and we put it to a vote, but I'm telling you, the bitterness and the hatred and the variance must end, it's destroying our community, it's just, it's going to divide churches and divide people, please, I beg you, I beg you as a council to lead in this and not allow any more of this division to take place. Again, people have the right to bring the mayor up for a recall, but do it the right way and with the right heart, filled with love. I've been here for a long time, I love this community, I only want to see good happen to it and what I see now is so evil and so offensive in the sight of God, I'm afraid and I will quit.
Next we have Bonita, I'm sorry for giving you the wrong name, Bionec, did I say that right, hopefully? Okay, I'm sorry.
That's quite all right, no one gets it right, my name is Bonita Binié, I live at 719 Stanley Road. Last summer I attended a meeting with the Friends of the Energy and while they proposed an idea for a fundraiser, after giving them details about what the Christmas Tea on the Energy fundraiser would entail, the committee told me it probably would not take place in 2021 since, as they said, I needed the approval of the Two Harbor City Council, a process they included that would be painful and slow. Even though I live within walking distance of City Hall, I do not live within the city limits and I don't vote in Two Harbors elections. And since I'm still new to the Lake County, my knowledge of elected city officials is little to none, because of that and due to the fact I was somewhat warned about the speed at which the city council does things, I decided to go directly to Mayor Swanson for advice. I did not know Mayor Swanson, but had become friends with his mom, Kay, and figured if he was anything like her, he would help me. After asking Chris if there was any way to speed the process along, he said that the Friends of the Energy Committee had been given the authority by the city council to approve their own events. Chris said he would contact the Energy Committee Chair and let her know that they could approve Energy events without needing an okay from the city council. Soon after, I got a call from the committee chair letting me know the Christmas Tea had been approved, but before the first Christmas Tea was to take place, a snag developed, a snag I could no longer deal with. One day before we were to hold a media-only Christmas Tea on the Energy, I had decided to step away from an event I had thought of, I had proposed, and I, along with the Friends of the Energy, had worked to make possible. At that point, I knew the event could go on without any glitches, whether I was there or not, and that was all that I cared about, but then a funny thing happened. Later the same day, I got a call from Mayor Swanson asking me how things were going with the Christmas Tea. With a half-hearted laugh, I told him, "Not will," which led to Chris asking if I'd be willing to be with him and someone from the Friends of the Energy to work things out. Although I no longer wanted anything to do with the event, Mayor Swanson encouraged me to stay with the project. Mayor Swanson had only positive things to say about everyone involved in the project itself. Chris told me, "We are all on the same side and pulling the same rope since we are all working for the betterment of our community." He then asked me to consider staying on the Christmas Tree Fund, Christmas Tea fundraiser and I ended up doing just that. I'm a transplant from the cities and someone whose senior graduating class had over 800 students in it. I realize now that small towns have residents who often do not like the change strangers bring, even when those changes might make their community shine bright with things much greater than gold. One of the Friends of the Energy, Tom Kohler, gave me a great compliment on December 5th concerning changes. Tom wrote something to me that I say to Mayor Swanson now, "You have had the imagination, creativity, and the courage to introduce and do new things in this town, that speaks volumes. Doing something new includes a learning process about everything and everyone, people can be the hardest part."
Next up we have Jean Sewell, already Mayor Swanson.
My name is Jean Sewell, 1810th Avenue, and I'm wearing my Two Harbors Residence Hat today. Two Harbors, we have a problem. When I receive an email inviting me to a question and answer session about the Tall Ships hosted by the mayor and the email is signed by the mayor as the mayor, but it's sent from Garage Starts and contains a Zoom link that belongs to Pure Driven, it is clear that we have a problem. What hat are you wearing, Mr. Swanson? And when you canceled the meeting at the last minute saying only, "The city council members refuse to participate." These patterns of the appearance of impropriety, conflict of interest, in addition to the well-documented and ever-surfacing serial violations of city code and charter are a problem. Rather than listening, understanding, and making changes as we would expect of our elected officials, the mayor doubles down. He walks out when he might be criticized until those who have concerns to refrain from electronically engaging with him. This isn't how elected office works. You can keep your personal Facebook pages and your business Facebook pages, but you don't need one identifying yourself as the mayor if it's not connected to the city and monitored by the city. Choose your hat. I've owned businesses and managed others, this effort is led by many who understand how businesses work. The residents of Two Harbors have a vision and it's just as valid as yours. We do not celebrate mediocrity, we are not jealous, we are not coming from a place of angry ignorance and we are no longer to live in unison with Chris's supposition that the residents of this city are somehow incapable of determining what's best. It's hard to get, to look like a successful city when the Luthe learns of the ships event over a year in advance, but we only get a few months because we couldn't know before a 501(c)(3) was approved. That's a problem. I've heard Chris explain confusion as to what needs to be done if there's a conflict of interest. He is well into his second term, if he has not figured out how to read the charter and follow those instructions, I imagine it's not going to happen anymore at this point and that is a problem. We will not entertain exchanging investments for special voting privileges, we will not explore becoming a statutory city so Chris can thinly fail his attempt to avoid the recall authority that home charter cities have. We, he might also want people outside of the city that are affected by the city votes to serve in committees. Well, we're being contacted every day by people outside the city that are also affected by the city's decisions and they want to sign the petition. Let us beware of unintentionally creating slippery slopes. We will not entertain trading investments for special voting rights. The people involved in this effort come to us from a variety of political persuasions and walks of life, intentionally the August 2020 situation was left out of the certificate to not offend anyone's political sensibilities. Any contention otherwise is without merit. Thank you.
And last we have Tony Wangan, did I say that properly, sorry, already Mayor Swanson.
Hello, thank you, my name is Tony Wangan, I'm a concerned citizen of Two Harbors with a personal message to Mayor Swanson, 1627 Seventh Avenue.
Sorry.
Mr. Swanson, the news these days is full of stories about your involvement with inappropriate and possibly criminal business practices. As you know, there is a task force, very, very close to succeeding in a recall and I am part of that task force and I can assure you the evidence we have is solid. The mission is to ensure you will no longer be mayor of Two Harbors, whether you resign or recall is up to you. What you may not know is that there are those of us who have been praying for you to have a changed heart. You have professed to be a Christian, a man of faith in God and a believer in Jesus Christ. I prayed that you would revisit those core beliefs, reclaim your Christian standards, and return to practicing honesty with the integrity that your constituents expected from you when they cast their votes. None of that has happened. What would Jesus do? He would choose honesty over personal gain. Where is the honor in your success if you achieve it by dishonesty and betrayal? Because you have proclaimed to be a follower and a believer in Christ and because you have been chosen to lead in our community, you are held to a higher accountability than the average citizen. So whether you are guilty of any or all of the charges against you, you have certainly exposed many instances where the appearance of impropriety is clearly evident and the lines separating your mayoral position and your personal business are extremely blurred. What would Jesus want you to do? He would expect you to seek his... He would expect you to seek His guidance, of course, but a good place to start would be to admit to your inappropriate business practices, ask forgiveness from the people who supported you in achieving your position, and step down from the job you have been unable to adequately perform. Please resign. Thank you."
That's very elaborate.
All right. We're done with appearances now. We'll move on to administrative reports.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a recap from our 5 o'clock meeting. As I had stated on March 14th, that Julie Sandsky was bringing forth a polar vortex bill. It was Bill 3944, which had a lot to do with the gas, extremely high gas prices that we saw in February of 2021. And last Thursday, they had a hearing that was some people that testified was MMUA and surrounding communities that were affected. This Tuesday, Councillor Derek Passy will represent the city of Two Harbors for that bill and testify at that. So I'm glad to see that keep moving forward and that we support that. One of the other things is we received notification with some FFA, FAA, sorry, bipartisan infrastructure bill. That means that the city, over the next five years, is going to be receiving $159,000 per year for our Richard P. Helgason Airport, which is very exciting. I have a meeting with SEH this week to go over some costs and ideas for where we can spend those dollars to be presented to the city council. And that's all I have for the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Costley, City Attorney.
Well, what I have, what I would ask of the council is now that I've issued this memorandum of opinion, because this has been before this council for a long time, I would suggest that the council set some targets to do something with it, do nothing with it, so I can get it off my plate. It doesn't matter what you do, but I don't want it to continue on. So I have that for you to consider. It was just completed Sunday night. I fully have no objection. But I think there, at whatever time it needs to address it, but it is an item for this council that I don't want to wait two months to bring it back up. While it's fresh in everybody's mind, and particularly, I want it fresh in my mind.
Mr. Chair, if I might. Thank you, Mr. Costley, for emailing me back. Just getting that last night. I've been really busy getting ready for a trip, so I just respectfully would ask that we would hold this up. I'll be gone for the next council meeting, so I was hoping it could be the council meeting after that. But the second question I have is, as we're in the recall process, I see that on the agenda tonight. Doesn't that satisfy what the expectations are in terms of these issues? So in other words, if a recall is to occur, aren't these issues a moot point? Isn't that what the recall is for?
I believe so, once. I don't know. I would have to refer to the attorney.
Well, I'll tell you how it works. And the recall petition on both--
He's trying to get out of this, right? A valid recall memorandum--
Coming down to determination by this council whether or not non-feasance or malfeasance occurred. That's going to be the decision. It is not a requirement that you take action on my memorandum of opinion. You don't have to do anything with it, because the mayor's right. It goes to the allegations in the recall. So I don't have a problem procedurally with that. I just want this council to have the opinion that I have. Because you asked me to give it, and I gave it. Granted, the other two things, I gave you unsolicited, but I assumed you were going to ask me for them anyways, and I wanted to package it all into one document and get it all done at one time. So that is true. You don't have to do a thing. Yep. A valid recall petition is presented to the city and certified. You have ears to me. Reading the petition. Identifying that you're involved, and you don't have to make that determination.
I just had a question. What is the timeline on the recall? How long does that take to come to an end?
Well, we don't even have a petition in front of us right now. Okay? Once we do get a petition, we have 10 days to, I call it certify. Administration will have to verify the signatures. And then the matter comes before this council for consideration and determination, as I said, whether malfeasance or non-feasance occurs. And there are some state guidelines about when you can and can't have elections in every districting year. And I'll defer to the clerk on that. I haven't spent a lot of time, honestly, on that. I've been focusing on the other part of it. When we get, if we get to that point, I will let the council know what the timeline is. Because as far as, from the date that the council takes it, if the council makes a determination of malfeasance or non-feasance, when that election would be called. And we will also work with the Secretary of State's office. That's somebody that we will lean on. Make sure we do that appropriately and follow whatever guidelines there are. Yes, the council makes a determination of malfeasance or non-feasance.
So no matter what, in the end, the council is the judge and jury?
Council will make the determination. That is correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, the regulations regarding elections during redistricting year are that there can be no elections, special elections, prior to the August primary.
I appreciate a little more conversation from the council on the mayor's timeline for wanting to deal with this stuff.
Mr. Chair, in all fairness, if the mayor needs to be out of town, I think that he should have every opportunity to review the attorney's findings. I know it was a lot for me to process last night and today, so I don't have a problem with us giving the mayor the opportunity to review what the attorney has put before us. I'm sorry, Mayor, what was the date that you felt you could?
Well, I'm gone for the next meeting, Mr. Chair. So what is that?
WD-11.
2nd, 11th. So is that for this on the 25th?
25th.
25th, the meeting of 25th in April.
So I guess if we need to have further discussion or if the mayor would like to respond to the attorney's memo, then let's give the mayor that opportunity to do that, but have before the end of April. And then I guess the only other thing that this council can do at this time is allow the recall process to move forward in whichever direction it goes, and then we have to decide what to do with that once those signatures are certified. That would be my recommendation. I know that, you know that we're all weary. It's been a lot for all of us. We have a lot of important work to get done right now. But this too, we shall overcome, and we shall move on together and as a community. So that would be my recommendation.
Do you have a couple of discussion on that?
Mr. Chair, for starters, I will also be going on the 11th for that meeting, so it may be hooves to shove that back to the meeting following. I did want to say, just as far as this whole process, that I am, I love Two Harbors, and I love what this town is capable of doing and what it has been able to do. And this has been very, very difficult to see two different sides, so, for lack of a better word, angrily at each other in what is a really, really great place. And I hope that whatever happens, that we follow the process. We follow what the state and the code and the charter say to do. And we know it's a slow process. Government, if it's done well, I'm sorry, does take a long time when people sometimes want it to move more quickly. But I also think that we should be wary of whatever we start now. And I like to think of Two Harbors of the 10 years from now, Two Harbors, whereas it could be my son or my daughter-in-law sitting here. And whatever we do today in these next coming weeks is going to affect those people and that Two Harbors. And so don't be so quick, because something right now might be a knee-jerk reaction and feel like it's the right thing that has to happen now. It may not be the right thing that should happen for the Two Harbors 10 years from now. And I want us to be really careful to follow the process and leave your emotions in the car, leave your emotions at home, and really think this through. Thank you.
Do we see anything from public works? Because we can't tell her background. She's good?
All right. I did have one more thing.
Go ahead.
I think I heard the clerk mention this. As you may or may not be aware, we have had voluminous data requests lately. And I think I heard, isn't it on? On the light side. It's as good as I can do. I'm not bothered. Can you hear me? I just want to make sure that we're staying on task on those only because there's a lot of information there that has to be put together. As the attorney, I want to make sure that we are being responsive. There was a concern about gathering data, how we gather data, the process to go through that. And I think I heard the city clerk talk about proceeding, using the IT people to do that. Did I hear that correctly? I just want to make sure that there is direction from the council on that tonight, how that moves forward. So that's just something that's sitting there to me that needs some good process to move along. However that occurs, I want to make sure that happens. Thank you. That's all I have.
So as far as we not having anything established for a date, just 4/25 work for everybody to review this, then? Okay.
And--
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yep. And did we have something official in here about? I thought we did, right? Consent agenda?
Actually, under new business.
Okay. Perfect.
Number 12.
Sounds good. All right. Patty Mardine, City Clerk.
As we discussed at the 5 o'clock meeting, I just wanted to mention, for the benefit of those who were not in attendance at that meeting, that we are in a place where we had to redo our redistricting due to the fact that when staff put together the information that is used, which is the population by block, to determine how the ward boundaries should be moved, they used the ROM data. Instead of using the total population, they used the over 18 population just for the purpose of moving those lines. And this was caught by Lake County when they went to enter it into their system. So we have redrawn those lines. Once again, I've got a copy of the map over there behind those folks that are kind of leaning up against it there. And we actually got the lines closer in population than we did even before. So there are not significant changes, but there are a few folks who will be receiving notice if the council sees it bid to adopt these new boundary lines, that they are moved into a different ward than that they were in before. So if anyone has any questions about that, feel free to ask. If not, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Committee reports. We'll start out with Public Affairs Committee.
That's my new one. Thank you, Mr. President. We did meet, we did talk about the public speaking process as far as, and how you've kind of established, you know, a certain amount of folks and then a certain amount of time, and what they can be able to speak and to share their thoughts and be able to address the council. We decided on, we're going to run that past the city attorney and get back, have him get back with us as far as how that process is going to be solidified before it's finalized. Until then, you have been making the decisions to fairly carry that out. There were two other things. And Robin, I did not bring my notes. We talked about, I should have given you a warning.
Yeah, you should have. It's okay. Let me see.
But I can see them, and I can see that I wrote them down. But--
Well, I know we did discuss trying to find somebody or some way to continue with the Neighborhood Revitalization Grant project that the HRA does not want to handle this year. That was one of the things we discussed. And I think a lot of it was just reviewing some of the things that the committee had been working on prior to you being named Chair and just kind of bringing you up to speed on where the conversations had gone with regards to the communication policy and a couple other policies. So it was kind of a catch-up meeting.
It was. Sorry, it was. It was more just getting me up to speed, being part of that and where we want to proceed.
Video?
Also, yes, talking about the communications and being able to be transparent with video access, again, for the public to be able to participate either here or from their homes with recording and be able to hear and see what the council chambers are doing. Thank you.
Energy Commission, next.
Yep. Three of Paul and Merrick Ice came up recently before the 16th of this month. Two of them are licensed steam engineers. There was another maritime expert from the SS Meteor. Her name was Dara. She's a qualified oiler, actually. There's very few people that are left that can actually run a steam plant on a boat like that. There was talks before of having it steam again. To do that, it'd actually be cheaper to have a replica made, I think, that would just be on diesel. So to get it running again as a steam plant, they could do it, they said, but I think it'd be very expensive. We're also going to meet with Sam Borowski and Jen. We're going to meet up. They had some questions about the Energy Dock and the tall ships coming, and whether or not they could park some ships there. Larry Ronnie is still working on the pilot house ceiling, fixing some rotted wood and stuff up there. The Friends of the Energy is asking for materials to be covered for the ramp onto the boat. It's not going to exceed $1,000. I'll bring that forward to city staff. We also talked about putting in some LED lights on the dock there just for safety reasons. And we continued our list of ongoing maintenance. And that's all we have for the Energy.
Thank you. Finance Committee.
We met on the 17th. We talked about the THGA. And we're going to meet with the members of the Two Harbors Golf Association in April. Our Greens person is gone, so I believe we're still looking for a new Greens person. For then, the end of March, early April, we're going to look at the 2021 budget amendment. The audit was canceled on February 28th and moved to March 4th. And that timeframe was also moved to April 18th through the 22nd, so we'll have the audit going here soon. We talked about adding the 500 block of 4th Avenue onto the 2023 street project. Also, we haven't had a utility rate study done since 2014, so we're due for one of those. The electric and gas need to be done. And we also had a discussion on an item on the agenda tonight about Jeff Anderson for lobbying, which he pulled us in, brother. That's what we had to finance.
Miles, do you want to also report on the ad hoc ethics meeting?
We went over the issues. Not many of them tonight. Didn't get opinions that the attorney offered us in his memorandum of understanding, some of them. None of them were new. I think you guys are all aware, even everybody in the public is aware. So we don't really need to waste any time on that one.
Resume more with that on the 24th?
Right.
There was a couple things referred to the attorney, but that were going to be referred to the Minnesota Attorney General. But after hearing from our attorney, it seems that there's no point in that. So we pulled those off the agenda for tonight, and that's what we talked about. That committee on affairs.
Sounds good. Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Personnel Committee met on March 21st. We had a presentation from Jennifer Sterns regarding her rate of compensation. Had some discussion with regard to that and referred that to Glattey and Hood for attorney review and then to finance. We can only do so much with regards to what her contract should look like, but we need some guidance from finance with regards to her request for increased compensation. Talked a little bit about doing the interview for the interim city administrator. We talked about the cable TV coordinator position. We'd like, and again, that's on the agenda as a contracted position for the next six months, thinking that as we move forward with a new city administrator, it would be a good time to have that position reviewed and then let the new city administrator have some input on how he was a communications person in the future. The Labor Management Committee that was approved during the contract negotiations has sent a request to start meeting with the city staff. They will decide who will be the members of that committee and then suggest time and dates. We would like to keep that to a quarterly or as needed meeting. And talked about summer temp employment. We want to get that posted, but again, that was something that needs to be reviewed by finance for rates of pay. I guess, you know, $12 now doesn't cut it anymore. So let's see. And then we, what was that one? On March 25th at 2 o'clock, we did the interview with a possible candidate for the interim city administrator. And let me just tell you, that was an extremely positive interview. We had great discussion. This gentleman comes with an extreme, an extensive list of background information. He's, he just seems like he's just, has so much knowledge. I was duly impressed. One of the things I know that Councilman Welton is, has been, you know, worried about us getting a permanent replacement. And one of the comments this gentleman said was, "So the sooner I find my replacement, the sooner I'm done with work." And he really had a lot of great things to say about not only the city of Two Harbors, but, you know, we said that was the number one thing that we wanted him to assist us with. Let's, you know, figure out how we're going to move forward with this. And that probably will be his number one goal. Beyond that, we said, you know, there's some organizational things we would like you to do. I think Patty and Miranda are at the point now where any help they can get would be extremely positive because they both need a vacation. So I would hope that everyone would please approve this gentleman for our interim city administrator and get that moving forward. And that's it.
Public Works Committee.
Public Works Committee met on Thursday, the 24th, and we had a presentation from Joe Ryan of Bolton Bank relative to the preliminary design cost for the 2324 street project. To date, the county has not put forward their timeline for their coincidental project. And so we asked Joe to check with the county because it did, since we are counting on the county's project to defray the cost of our project, it didn't make sense to go forward with our project without the county moving forward with theirs. We did have a presentation by Darby Eschenbachter relative to our policy on special assessments. She lives on a street that had an overlay that was assessed to their project or to their, the former owners of the project or the homes. That project was completed about 15 to, no, 18 years ago. And we talked to Joe in the anticipated lifespan of that seal coat overlay, potentially 20 years before it would be done again. Additionally, we also looked at the relative assessments that they paid for that, that work, and it was around $300, $400 per household. We also discussed the 2022 street project and how it fit in with the comprehensive trail plan and came to the conclusion that the trail will have to wait until the roadway gets rebuilt. And in this, with the understanding that most of the sidewalks in the city, if they're on the trail border, they do get used by bicycles. We really don't kick people off the sidewalks. And frankly, I prefer to see kids riding their bicycles on the sidewalks and on the trail. We also received a list of potential overlay projects from the Public Works Director. And we also received a cost of the, of doing these projects. And I think that the consensus was the cost of the mill and overlay really were a lot higher than what we expected and probably not cost-effective just for roads that might be, will need complete rebuild shortly.
Did I miss anything, Miles? No. You guys had a busy Public Works meeting.
Yeah.
All right. Is there any other meetings or committees that I missed on that?
Yes, there was, Mr. Chair. Trees and Trails met on March 17th. So Derek, you want to give that one?
Trees and Trails did meet on the 17th. I think that's where the, or meanwhile, I look for the agenda.
I'll help you.
Thank you.
So we talked about the Odegaard Trail Project and the status of that. We heard a presentation from Dan Kirkshank about a group who wants to do a fat tire bike trail. It was just, just an idea. So we heard about that. We talked about some signage on some of the trails. And then we are focusing in our Arbor Day project, which will be done in conjunction with the school district. So we'll have that finalized by the next meeting. We talked about a trail that's by Mataglia Drive and then also a little gravel path that needs some, it's not going to be a new trail, but it just needs some, has some safety concerns. It's kind of by the bus garage, so we talked about that. And then, of course, our focus for 2022 is the motorized trails. And so we talked more about that, trying to get ATV and snowmobile traffic from the west end to the east end of town. Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
Thanks, Jen. Just a quick question for you too, Jen. A few years ago, I remember us as a council approving somebody to do some sort of like bike track behind, up in there. Whatever happened to that?
That was a skills park, I think he's talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know that that was, I believe Nate I with the county was working on it. And I think it was more of a concept that he presented to the city, and he wasn't really ready to build it yet. And I'm not sure if it...
I think the volunteers fell through.
Yeah.
About Manbar that's moved up to him.
It never went through. And then it sounds like this one that they want to do is, it'll share a corridor with the snowmobile trail. It'll be a separate, separate trail, but it would ultimately share a corridor and would go over to the snowshoe trail.
Correct.
But it would be a fat tire bike, like an exhibition trail.
That's, yeah. I was just making sure that one thing wasn't the same thing that was talked about.
No, it would change the use of the snowshoe trails potentially to year-rounded as opposed to currently they were approved for winter use only.
All right.
Mr. President?
Yes. Go ahead, Cathy. Sorry if I didn't see my address.
Rec Board met. Is it okay if I give?
Absolutely. Go for it.
Thank you. Rec Board met on March 21st. We had two action items. One was to approve for Pony League football for the 2223 season. The other action item was to approve 50% of the total cost of a modular fencing system, a surface mount system at the softball fields. We'll be working with the school district. The approximate cost is $8,500, shared with the school district and ourselves to be able to have youth events and then softball where they need a different fence line versus the traditional baseball fence line. We also had some discussion from Tim Repri, our coordinator. We just wanted to make sure that people were aware. He shared with us that we are, we had winter swimming lessons for the first time. We had a new structure for swimming this year due to COVID and other procedures. We have smaller groups meeting for shorter spurts of time rather than for those of us that grew up taking swimming lessons, having a lot of people in the pool at the same time and having to wait for the instructor. So we also did a winter session of swimming lessons. There's also going to be some discussion of a possible rec swim team that would be coordinated through Erin Naho. We'll be having her at a future meeting to discuss that. Summer rec registration for items, swimming, baseball, and softball are already up online. So families and students can already start to register for summer rec, swimming, baseball, and softball. Other events will be put up later as they get organized. Those things, I think, can be found on the City of Two Harbors webpage for information on that. And then our summer rec programming and events usually start the Monday after the last day of school. Rec skating just finished, and that went really well. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Were there any other committees on that? Nope? All right. Next, I'm looking for a resolution approving the consent agenda items.
So move. Second.
Cathy, can you read those down here, please?
Absolutely. Number one, approving minutes from the March 14th, 2022 regular city council meeting. Two, allowing claims against the city to be paid on March 29th, 2022. Three, approving payment for the first half of March 2022. Four, a communication from resign or recall committee representatives, Todd Brennan, Tony Wangan, David Poplek, Julie Wilson, and Thomas Kohler providing a certificate for recall of Mayor Christopher Swanson and petition to recall Mayor Christopher Swanson. Number seven, approving the application of the Two Harbors Golf Association for an on-sale and Sunday, on sale liquor license for 1349 Highway 61. Eight, approving a quote from San Junto Harbors for the purchase of a 2022 Flares Ranger side-by-side utility vehicle and accessories for an amount of $25,447.50. Nine, accepting the proposal of Water Conservation Services Incorporated to provide a water distribution leak survey for an amount of $3,210. Ten, accepting the proposal of Northern Elite Epoxy for epoxy floor coating at the new campground bathhouse for an amount of $6,000. Eleven, accepting the proposal of Great Lakes Pipe Service to provide annual sanitary sewer cleaning and televising services for an amount not to exceed $30,000. Twelve, accepting the quote from Electroforge Custom Welding for new turnout gear lockers for the fire department for an amount of $12,000. Thirteen, that the interim employment agreement between the City of Two Harbors and Joel Dine be approved and executed by the mayor, subject to contingent on and effective on the date of completion of a satisfactory background check, and that City Council President Ben Redden be designated as the city council designee under the agreement. Fifteen, approving the request of David Elquist to attend the Minnesota Municipal Beverage Association Annual Conference in Alexandria. Sixteen, a communication from Julie Hucready of Silver Creek Township expressing her opinion regarding potential recall of Mayor Swanson. Seventeen, approving the application of Castle Danger Brewing for brewer off-sale malt liquor license pending passage of the Omnibus Liquor Bill HF 2767, which would amend Minnesota statute 348.28, small brewer off-sale, which would provide an ability for them to sell rovers. Eighteen, approving the request of the library director for payment of conference registration fees to attend the 2022 American Library Association Conference in Washington, DC.
Thank you, Cathy. Any discussion on this? No? Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glasher?
Yes.
Brenwell?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Passy?
Yes.
Erickson? She just sent me a message. I saw that she got kicked off of Zoom, so, oh, let's give her a second here. Erickson, is that you? Sorry. We'll just, we'll pass Cathy because I think she got kicked off. Somehow through the Zoom, lost her connection. And then Redden.
Yes. We have nothing under unfinished business. We will start off with new business item number one, a resolution amending resolution number 3-80-22, a resolution establishing wards and polling places.
Second.
Who's?
He was, I'm sorry.
Any discussion on this item?
Mr. Chair, although I don't have it in the title, as we discussed earlier, that includes rescinding the previous resolution. Just so everyone's aware of that.
I find it friendly.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion on this item? Not? Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glasher?
Yes.
Brenwell?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Passy?
Yes.
Erickson? Redden?
Yes. New business item number two, a resolution authorizing payment to Bolton Bank in the amount of $19,624.50 for the construction engineering services from January 2nd, 2022 to February 4th, 2022 for the wastewater treatment plant project. So move. Second. Any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glasher?
Yes.
Brenwell?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Passy?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Redden?
Yes. And then, as advised by our city attorney, we struck number three and four off of our new business. And so I'll continue with number five, a resolution ordering the 2022 sidewalk improvement project.
So move.
Second. Roll call, please, or any discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glasher?
Yes.
Brenwell?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Passy?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Redden?
Yes. New business item number six, a resolution accepting the quote from Primetime Concrete for the 2022 sidewalk improvement project.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glasher?
Yes.
Brenwell?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Redden?
Yes. Passy?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
All right. New business item number seven, a motion establishing the process for collection of city council email for data requests. Councilors will be responsible for collecting their own, or city IT representative will be asked to retrieve the data from the server.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we ask the city IT representative be asked to retrieve that data from the server.
Second. Any other discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Can I get, I'm sorry, Mr. President, could you just provide clarification? This is an either/or?
Yes.
No.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I made, sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I made the motion that we have the IT person do the data collection only because... the IT person do the data collection only because several of us have had extreme difficulty finding anything past December of 2020.
I guess my ask would be that it could be either/or for those that can do it. I think that was the intention of the motion, so that those that need it can request it and those that have access can, I think that was the intention.
And I think that's how I saw it too, was that was the intention of the motion was that it could be either/or, we basically just let our administrative staff know what we'd like to do with that.
Mr. Chair, I'm fine with that, I just want a clarification, what you want me to do. So, if each individual would kindly send me an email, you know, responsive to that so that we can keep moving forward with those data requests, that would be greatly appreciated.
Do I need to amend the motion then to add back in that counselors will be responsible for collecting their own data or contact the city IT representative?
I would say contact the administration and bill.
But, I mean, do I need to amend the motion because I didn't, I didn't have the part in motion about the counselors being able to collect their own data? Can I amend that motion?
Attorney Costley.
When you're done.
No, I'm just, well, I'm just wondering, can I amend that motion, the motion that's on the floor, that's already, that's second.
Change it?
Then I will amend the motion to add that the counselors may be responsible for collecting their own data as well. Any further, thank you, sorry.
Attorney Costley, your thoughts?
Well, the only thing I will speak on that issue is when you are responding to a request like this, in my opinion, it's important to be consistent. And there could be cases where a request is made and some of it is obtained from the IT folks and other information is obtained from individual council members and we're not necessarily following the same standard. That's my legal concern. I like consistency because the procedure then is very easy to follow. We don't get into debates about who does what and when, we just have one policy, you do one thing or the other, we're after the same information. So, that's my only common tenet, that would be my preference.
Kathy, do you see, have your hand raised?
Sorry, and, and just to clarify what Attorney Costley just said, then I think there needs to be more conversation about redaction and appropriateness because you can pull data, but you have to decide what's germane to the data request. So, while I appreciate that perspective, there's a lot that could be pulled from people's email that would potentially need further conversation.
Well, Mr. Chair, unfortunately, that's, and Counselor Erickson, that falls on my plate and my obligation when we get a data request that some of you know is to read through every single page, line by line, to make sure there is nothing in the request that we're sending out that's non-responsive or could be determined to be privileged information. So, it's a lot of work. Don't kid yourself, but that is my obligation to do that.
Thank you, thank you for the clarification.
I don't know, Counselor Erickson, if you find it friendly, I think it's easy if we all just go through IT. I mean, then they're sending the consistent data. If anybody else has an opinion, I just think it's easy. I don't want to go through all my emails instead, personally, just because, but yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask a question? We've been going through all this, there's a whole box on the conference room table. I get hundreds of emails. So, the issue I see is all we're doing is printing off every single email, we still have to look at all those, how is there any difference if we just say that emails get printed? That, to me, seems to be the same standard format for everybody. I don't, personally, we've already spent a lot of money and time doing this, so, I'm kind of like, okay, no, we're gonna go back through and do it, but it doesn't matter to me, but I just think it's, the standard is you're printing off the document, here's the email. So, Eddie, Kathy, Counselor Erickson's right on that.
Go ahead, Patty.
I, I just want it clear because I don't, I don't, I don't want to look into your emails if you don't, you know what I mean, I'm not, I don't want to, and I don't do what I would have or do it. But I, I, you know, it just puts me in a, it's a, it's a tough position to be in, you know what I mean? I don't want to be into your business that I don't need to be in. So, but, you know, if the request is for all certain things, we can put in parameters in a search, but I think Tim just wanted it defined, is the purpose of it. Because, because, you know, like, Ward asked me the other day, should I just pull everyone's? And I'm like, no, let's just wait, because I, you know, I mean, I don't feel comfortable just automatically doing that. So, I think that's kind of where the question came from, you know?
And I want everybody here to be clear, everything that's on that server from the City of Two Harbors is subject to a data practices request. Whether or not it actually gets turned over is going to depend on whether it's a transient email or an email discussing the business of the city. Trust me, I don't want to make any more work for myself, I don't want to have to look through that. My point is, if you get a data request, you are asked, asked to turn over the information for the protection of everybody here. I would prefer that we have one policy and the policy would be the IT people pull the information, they, they present it, I'll go through it, make sure we're not disclosing improper information, and then it's done, everybody's on the same standard, we're doing a full, proper disclosure. That would be my preference. I agree with Attorney.
That's my preference, I literally can't go back past 1222 of 2020.
Twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty.
Yeah.
And so, I'm like. Counselor Erickson, how do you feel about that?
Yeah, folks, I don't have, I, I don't have a point either way, I'm totally fine, I was just reading the original motion that had, that was an option both, and then when I heard Counselor Glacher kind of edited, I was just asking a question to clarify that. If that's the recommendation from our attorney, I have no qualms with that, I just thought there was an option for both depending on, you know, what, what each individual data request is and how to provide that information. So, again, I, I just, it was different than what the intention of the original motion that I saw was why I questioned it.
All righty. Rereading that motion then, the way I find it is establishing the process for collection of the city council email for data requests. The city IT representative will be responsible for that, is that, or right now with current motion on the floor is still, counselors will be responsible for collecting their own or city IT representative will be asked to retrieve the data from the server.
I put it up, the intention on how I written it, wrote it when I drafted it was so that you guys would make a decision either/or.
One or the other.
Right, but I, you know, I'm, whatever you decide, but I just, I just was looking for clarification for myself.
Then I'll make a second amendment to my motion, Mr. Chair, and take out, the counselors will be responsible for collecting their own data as advised by the city attorney. Think that it's probably going to be much easier that way for our staff and I, for one, don't want to spend hours looking through my emails or you, and I think it's, just makes sense, so that's, I would make, re-amend my amendment.
Lots of friends in this here.
We're, we're gonna be hugging pretty soon.
Any more discussion on that item? If not, roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glacher?
Yes.
Redden?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Redden?
Yes. All right, new business item number eight, a resolution accepting the recommendation of the counselors assigned to negotiations, Redden and Erickson, to authorize the execution of memorandum of understanding between the City of Two Harbors and Two Harbors Confidential Employees Association regarding temporary compensation for Miranda Pietala.
I move that we refer this to the city attorney.
I'll second.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Didn't this already go to the attorney, to the employee attorney from Flattery and Hood?
It did.
So, why are we referring it to another attorney? We've already gotten an opinion from Flattery and Hood, why do we need to get another attorney opinion and send more on?
Because it is.
Go ahead.
It is written, so it violates the charter.
How so?
Because it has the signator on it be the council president and the, and.
Mayor?
No, not mayor. Mayor is not included as a signature on it. It is the committee.
Council president and finance chair, is how it shows inside of our packet, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Chair? Well, Mr. Chair, let me speak to this and see if I can facilitate something. This council has retained an attorney to do human resources, that's human resources work. What we don't do as attorneys is chime in and give other opinions against attorneys that we've already hired to represent the city. And I will refuse to do that, that's not appropriate, that's not, that's not my role. The city has retained somebody to do that, so, Counselor Passy, I think that referral should practically go to the attorney that was hired by the council to do this work, because it's not my work.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
I just think there needs to be a language change, I think Mrs. Pietala and Patty have worked a lot and I think they deserve this, this compensation, so maybe there just needs to be some language change, I think that sounds like what more is the problem. Am I correct, Counselor Passy?
I do, I do question that there is no duties assigned, there's no process identified to what the, what the duties that they will do to secure the permanent city administrator. We had a process that was identified to us in June of 2020, or 2021, and that has not been followed.
Is this permanent or retroactive, I guess I don't understand, given that we're hiring a city administrator?
This is moving forward just for the six-month interim time, I think Kathy could probably speak to it better than I can, but this is moving forward in the six-month interim for extra work that they will be doing because you cannot go retroactively.
Okay, well, okay, I understand, I don't, I guess I don't.
Kathy, could you speak to that more, please?
Yes, thank you. And, you know, if there's a, if there's an issue with signature or change, that can certainly be amended, but the spirit of the resolution was to move forward to provide this increase because of the next several months, we have many projects that are going forward in addition to helping support the work of our new interim city administrator who will also be working towards the main purpose to of providing additional support. We have two administrative employees who will continue to do a substantial increase in work, but this person bringing in as a temporary intern, interim city administrator will be helping us secure a long-term city administrator as well as supporting the work that we have here going on right now. We do believe that there will be a higher level of work being done as we have already seen over the past nine months since our city administrator had left. We do believe that this respective higher pay is in more alignment than with what we had done in the past regarding the interim pay that was given based on the step-up pay, so that does not totally reflect all the additional work that has been done. So, we believe that this motion is in accordance with what we expect to see happen over the next six months and the months following that when we get, hopefully, a new secured long-term city administrator. So, we do support that and that we would, if there is a signature change in the amendment, in the agreement, we could fix that in request for Counselor Passy.
Go ahead, Derek.
I would state that for the record, this is not a six-month period, it's defined out until December 2022, which would be nine months. And I would also state that by hiring a, an interim city administrator, we are reducing the amount of work by both Patty and Miranda. And third, if, if, if you use the same logic, when we hire a new public works administrator, you would have to include everybody to get a bump in pay to help them break in, and where's it stop? Do the rest of the people, administrative staff in the office get a bump in pay because they're helping a new administrator do his job?
Is there a motion for, Mr. Chair?
There is from Passy and Swanson.
And the motion is to refer it to the city attorney? If that's what the motion was?
Yes.
Yes, the motion was to move, reboot, return this over to the city attorney?
Let's clarify.
The attorney.
The attorney?
The attorney. So, I would use, I would use the labor and negotiations attorney, correct? That's.
Mr. Chair, I have it documented that he said, stated the city attorney, so if he would like to change his motion, that would be appropriate.
I can accept that.
Change it to who? Flattery?
Okay.
Mr. President?
Go ahead.
Thank you. And I'm certainly understanding of the point of view of Counselor Passy, but the information that I just shared and the conversations that we had were in support of our attorney. If this is just similar to having a, a signature change, I think we can still move forward with passing this resolution to adjust the pay with pending a change from our city attorney without having to refer it and have to wait for a future council meeting to take action.
Mr. Chair, I have to agree with Counselor Erickson that, you know, this could move forward with the appropriate signatures as defined by the charter added to the motion and we could certainly move forward. But that's up to those making the motion.
What is your, your concern, again, Mr. Passy, in regards to, it's just the signatures that are on the bottom of the?
No, I'm also concerned, as I said, $9,000, well, an extra thousand if we pass it to nine. And the workload actually being decreased due to having another staff member sharing work as well as additional requests from other people within the office requesting additional pay.
Well, one aspect of that would.
President Redden?
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Erickson.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, I, I certainly, again, I'm, I'm understanding the perspective, but our, our interpretation and the discussion we had with our attorney related to this issue was that there is still far beyond the regular workload for these staff people even with the addition of a interim city administrator. We have this discussion, which is why we are bringing this forward as a recommendation, and we, again, would recommend moving forward with these.
Mr. Chair, I need a clarification, is this for like 12 months or nine months? What's the length of this?
I, from the way that I believe it was written in the memorandum, it was in months leading forward with a new interim administrator and then several months after that, correct? This capacity, that you said?
It said at least till December 2022, but it had no sunset.
At this time, I think the clarification, Mr. President, was that this would be over eight months.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Counselor Passy, would you find it favorable to just cap it at like six months based on we have somebody coming in? It sounds like it's a six-month process that we're planning to have that person or maybe, I heard it's six months, but maybe it's gonna be longer than that?
Or cap it and review it, six months?
You know, I, I'm gonna ask the question, I just don't think that, I'm sorry, Kathy, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that we don't have any guarantee that we'll have a brand-new city administrator during that timeline, which was why they had it extended up to, and we could certainly continue to review and. And we could certainly continue to review and move forward if we want to have a change in that. But again, this is what we recommend at this point with the advocation from our city attorney, or from our negotiations attorney.
Mr. Chair, are you open to a cap and review?
I, I guess I just feel like until we have a, a new city administrator seated and brought up to speed on everything that is the City of Two Harbors and all of the projects that we are working on, I don't see that, that the current administrative, the system's, the current interim administration is going to have any less work in the next six to nine months, probably into January as far as I'm concerned. Just because we get somebody hired doesn't mean that they know the job immediately, and they're still gonna have to train and review and all of those things that go along with bringing somebody on board. So understandably, I just think that we need to either figure out a cap or move on with the motion that's on the floor.
Mr. Chair. I was, I'm just listening to everyone here and their, their, their thoughts. And, you know, I've been saying since December that we're doing our taxpayers a disservice by not having an administrator when that money is, is, you know, being set aside for an administrator. And now we're getting one, but yet we don't know if, you know, his sole job is going to be maybe even not even finding an administrator, and there's no sunset on this. And are we doing them a further disservice by paying our staff to do what he's going to be brought in to help do? And I, I don't want to belittle any work that has been done with the staff. They've done an outstanding job. But we're actually bringing them help. And they brought themselves help because we didn't have any say in who they were going to bring. But as far as that being said, then I don't know why we need to keep bumping up a salary when they're actually being given another person who's going to be able to help them get their jobs done and alleviate some of the workload. And I'm thinking about the taxpayers and what they pay for and what their expectations are and what they're getting in return. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, could I say something, please?
Kathy did have her hand up first.
Yeah, I, I'd really like to not dissolve this into what, what each of us feel that we're. I'm speaking for myself and as a representative of the negotiations committee who brought this forward. We believe that this is absolutely in the best interest of the taxpayers to make sure that we have committed and appropriately compensated people for the work that they need to be doing right now, which is a lot. There's a lot going on right now. This is bringing forward our recommendation. And I guess at this time, if people don't feel comfortable, we can take a vote and see. But on behalf of Counselor Redden and myself, we are bringing forward this resolution and a complimentary resolution to move forward with what I think is a very fair process in working with our negotiations attorney who worked directly with our confidential unit. That was not something that Ben and I did together. This was a recommendation that we are now bringing forward to the council. Anything else you want to say, Counselor Redden?
Just that to Derek, what where Counselor Passy was going with some of his concerns too. You were talking about other additional staff. We were dealing with this one bargaining unit this time. And so that's what we worry about on the floor, I feel like. I mean, that's, the confidential unit reached out and we're wondering about all of their compensation. And that's the way it was handled, just like any other negotiation that we've done.
Mr. Chair.
Other states of the real quick. The city administrator job is over $100,000 a year, and we haven't had one for the last nine months. So I feel like our staff has picked up, and I feel like the workload has been unbearable also. To say that it's, I don't think it's unfair to the taxpayer. I think they've picked up all the slack, and I feel they, I deserve, I think they deserve to be compensated. That's all I got.
I guess, Mr. Chair, I still would stand and say that I think it's a great thing to have that communication consistently. Is this, just a reminder, is this what we talked at Personnel some time ago? Is that, is this so that we could, we can't go retroactively with anything? Okay, so I haven't been on Personnel, so this is totally, guys. I thought that all happened already.
No, no, that got brought to our negotiations attorney and he said, you can't do that. So this is moving forward now so that they're properly compensated for what we thought that we could do in the long run. But the thing is, is we were in the middle of negotiations with all these bargaining units when we first lost our city administrator. And so for months and months, Patty and Miranda were like, well, we're, we'll figure it out later, we'll figure it out later. Well, then we couldn't find out you can't do anything retroactively either. You know, so that's.
That's good to know. I guess I didn't, I thought there was already compensation that I heard.
No, no.
Mr. Chair, I did not know that. I thought that there was already compensation that has happened.
There has not been.
I was not informed that there wasn't, but I had heard that that was in the works. And so I thought that this would be a second additional one upon.
Mr. Chair, Counselor Passy could be, I mean, I think we need to stop this at some point because there's an intention, we have to have by the end of the year of hearing, is that what, end of December? So, okay, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Knowing that there was not additional compensation previously for what the, the past eight months, I think it is reasonable to give them a bump in pay for the next, well, till December.
So we can leave the motion on the table as is?
Mr. Chair, I want to clarify that we did receive some additional compensation, but not what is typical. We received compensation in the amount of half of the difference of our salary in the bump up the administrator's salary or the person that you're bumping into. And that process is typical, as was stated in you guys' packets. That is typical for when someone moves from an hourly position into a salary position. Because what is understood is those individuals are still to receive overtime. Miranda and I got no overtime for this entire time. And I can tell you the amount of hours that we have spent over. We have lost out on hundreds of hours of vacation between the two of us and hours and hours of extra at night. So I think that, I mean, I just want to be clear that I don't want you to understand that we are not receiving any compensation. We did. But other individuals who have gone directly from a salary position to a higher salary position and added compensation. For instance, several years ago, we had a department head take on an extra department for a period of time. That person received compensation similar to what has been requested for Ms. Pietla. Does that answer questions?
So, Mr. Chair, there's a lot here. I don't know all the details of where their compensation stands, and nor do I think tonight is the appropriate place to have a discussion. So I'm just throwing this out there. I, I, I'm open. Does this, is this the kind of thing where we as a council can go and have a confidential meeting and kind of go and leave out everything? I'm hearing that there's a want for an increase, but I don't know where we stand today based on salaries and compensation.
Mr. President?
Go ahead, Kathy.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you, Mayor, for your comments. We did go through all of this as a negotiations committee. We walked through the differences, and thank you, Patty, for that clarification. But per your earlier comments, the amount that's being considered right now was the amount that was being considered before that didn't move forward. So that was a conversation that happened through Personnel and then did not move forward. But again, moving, moving forward from today, we again feel that due to the amount of work that's going to be on our team, regardless of bringing on an extra person, the amount of responsibility over the next eight months or through December 31st is going to be very high. So I continue to say that our negotiations team recommends this, and we'd like to see it move forward tonight.
Mr. Chair, also, Woodruff, you mentioned earlier you, you want to see this. What do you want to see? Do you want to see, would you be open to having a full discussion so we understand? What I'm hearing, you know, in the ether is we don't know what the compensation is exactly right now. So are you open to having that meeting?
Or it's spelled out in every contract, Mr. Mayor.
The exact, well, I heard there's been some increase based on what Patty spoke to them.
And, and I actually misspoke, but I did remember two council meetings ago, I did say that they got step-up pay. But that step-up pay equates to.
$2.36 an hour.
$2.36 an hour. So this is, you know.
For some of us. For some of us.
Yeah, we feel that that's an under value, and so that's why we talked about this in Personnel.
Sure.
And that's why, and actually what we're bringing out tonight is, is less of an amount than what we agreed to give them in Personnel for negotiations.
All right, well, I think we're back to, I'm hearing this, that we're back to just saying that there's gonna be a review date sometime December.
Well, December 2022 is already in, in the.
In the MOU?
In the MOU.
That isn't, that isn't the MOU.
Okay, yeah, very good.
You guys are comfortable moving forward on this? Any more discussion?
One more.
Wait, well, please hold. The motion is actually to refer, so that, did that get rescinded? So now we're actually making a motion to move, to approve this?
I would, I would recommend that we amend it to to approve it after review of the signatories by the labor attorney.
Okay, we'll find out.
I'm sorry, could you please clarify, you'll approve this with the signature change?
That's what you said, I think.
Yes.
Is that correct, Eric?
Correct.
Thank you.
Did the clerk say like $2.36 an hour? Why don't, I mean, I would like, if, if this is where it's going and what they've been actually doing in the workload they've been doing, why don't we bump it up another dollar and let them, we can't? We have to go a certain amount.
Well, no, we, that's why we did a, it's a negotiations tentative flat.
Well, that would be my intent, but okay, we'll go. They have worked very hard. Thank you.
So the way I read this resolution now is accepting the recommendation of the counselors who assigned to negotiations, Redden and Erickson, to authorize the execution of the memorandum of understanding between the City of Two Harbors and Two Harbors Confidential Employees Association regarding temporary compensation for Miranda Pietla ending December 2022.
With appropriate signatures as directed by the charter.
Thank you, with appropriate signatures as directed by the charter. Does that sound fair, Counselor Passy?
Yes.
Mayor Swanson?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Clasher?
Yes.
Reddall?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Passy?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Redden?
Yes. All right. New business item number nine is the exact same resolution striking out Ms. Pietla and putting in Patricia R. D.
Someone.
Second.
Does this include review of the signatories?
Correct, the exact same as last time. I just tried to abbreviate it. All right, any other discussion on this item?
Kathy, you have your hand up.
Well, sorry, I don't have my hand up. It's from before. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Clasher?
Yes.
Reddall?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Passy?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Redden?
Yes. New business item number 10, a resolution to consider the special event permit application of first-day events for their proposed Bald Eagle Waterski Show event to be held on August 20th, 2022 at Burlington Bay, requesting assistance from the city in coordination of garbage and recycled public dressrooms, closure of the public parking area at Burlington Bay, enhanced walking path signs allowing parking along Park Road except along the beach area.
Mr. President, in the interest of what Patty spoke to, I, I will abstain from this. Mr. Chair?
Yep.
What, are they asking for in-kind services or?
Correct. Technically, I'd like a motion on a second before we discuss.
Someone.
Second.
Second.
All right. Oh, go ahead, Kathy.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just was clarifying, did this run through Public Works? Normally, there's a little check-in, you know, has this gone through? This is the first I've seen of it, so I hadn't heard of it before, that committees, appropriate committees have seen it and are good with it?
Counselor Erickson, how we've been running these is that they've gone through the various departments. So the department heads have checked off because, you know, it, it just seems to be a little bit of a lengthy situation when we end up running through each and every council committee.
Sure.
So we're having the departments. And they've checked out everything that they could possibly do this. But the question that I had that I, I didn't want to allow on my own was the fact that if in-kind services are being authorized for first-day events with the potential for conflict of interest.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on this item?
Anybody want a legal opinion?
Yeah.
I'm gonna walk you quickly through the same analysis that we did last time. We've done this, we've talked about it. What we have here is an application for a special, that permit. Minnesota Supreme Court said a while ago that a contract, although not identical to a license, which is a permit, is the same analogy. So what you have is the city providing in-kind services to an entity which the mayor may have a direct or indirect interest. So I, I can't ignore that. I don't want to paralyze the city from doing anything, but I'm still faced with the charter. The code, the statute, the charter is pretty direct on that, the code is pretty direct on that. So if the city's providing in-kind services to an entity that the mayor has a direct or indirect interest, again, as I stated before, abstaining cannot solve the problem. That's, that's, that's the misunderstanding here is an absolute, you cannot do that. So the only way to solve that, in my opinion, is that the mayor says, I don't have a direct or indirect interest in first-day events. And if that representation is made, my legal issue before this council is removed.
Mr. Chair, I can assure you, I have no interest directly or indirectly with first-day events. Back to the council.
Any other discussion? Kathy? Eric, Counselor Erickson?
I guess.
I understand the ramifications.
Now that I, I, is, is our attorney suggesting that we should table this or say no to it due to his interpretation? I'm just trying to get clarity here.
No, once the mayor says that he doesn't have a direct or indirect interest in first-day events, my legal issue is removed based upon that representation. I don't go into, nor can I prove that right or wrong. Every council member has to act in good faith and make that representation. And if I'm giving that, I have to take it at face value. That ends my analysis.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
How can this not be similar to the tall ships then? I mean, they're, they were asking for, I mean, they were doing the permanent stuff. I guess I just don't get the difference. But now, but now they're asking for in-kind services, but. But now, but now they're asking for in-kind services, but...
I'll answer that. In, in my perspective, I was never given that representation in the prior analysis. Right? Now I have that representation, and I will have to rely on that. That's the difference.
Okay, Council Woodruff.
Okay. Kathy, did you have something else to add? Council Erickson?
Sorry, that auto hand does not go down all the time. Sorry about that.
Any other discussion on this from the council?
I just, if I may, I just, oh, I want clarification. So, from here on out, until maybe things someday get solidified with situations about conflict of interest, any time first-day events ever wants to do an event, we have to put them through this process and decide whether or not there is a conflict, and they're not allowed to be a nonprofit who wants to do events in the city. I'm just, I just want some clarification.
So I asked you, I'm sorry, Council.
The attorney said, as long as he has, since he has no direct or indirect interest, then, then he revolts his opinion.
And that he understands the ramifications, or if he has one.
Okay.
Is that how I understood it, Mayor Swanson?
Yeah, that's absolutely how I understood it.
So in turn, I hear that the, the attorney's, uh, reserve granted or diminished, though?
If a representation is made that there is no direct or indirect interest, I have nothing else to do.
All right, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glaser?
No.
Redwell?
Yes.
Swanson?
Abstain.
Passy?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Redden?
Yes.
All right. Moving on, sorry, I have a whole bunch more. New business item number eleven. Accepting the recommendation from the Ad Hoc Committee on Ethics to refer to the Public Affairs Committee, a proposal to amend the city code to prohibit social media accounts for the city of Two Harbors elected officials.
I'm gonna make a motion for some discussion here. If anyone wants a second.
Second for discussion.
I'll just touch on this while I came, again, uh, every time I've ever engaged on, on social media, even as just trying to inform people, like, the old bathroom, uh, like, um, the old bathhouse issues and stuff, I've never made any progress on a social media account, and I would encourage people to come down here, because this is the place to discuss it. Arguing on Facebook about things. I'm, I'm not against sharing information at all. I'm just saying there's a lot of misrepresentation out on, on social media. I believe the place to address those things would be come down here and ask the council. So that's why, and I, I thought, like, we already went through this on public affairs, I'm not sure if this is our policy as of now already, but, um, I, I just don't feel like it's a, a productive place to engage. I, I guess that, that's, that's just my opinion. There is definitely good things, too, that can come of it. My personal experience has been negative, so I'm open to, to discussion. I understand why somebody would want a social media account, just to have, you know, the good events, like, you know, Heritage Days or, or anything, Winter Frolic. So I get both sides.
Well, one thing that I'd also like to bring up is, the city maintains that if it's, and if it has anything to do with you being a public official, you are putting the city in liability. You're there, the city's liable for whatever you say on Facebook, they're liable, or any social media accounts, I'm sorry. They're also liable for, um, there was another one I was trying to make. I remember discussing it with the attorney and...
The comments that are...
The comments, I'm sorry, yes, the comments are a matter of public record, and if all of a sudden somebody starts going off and swearing on there, you can't delete that. It's public record, correct? Even if it's on a personal Facebook or, or social media thing, that's using your city name. Go ahead, Council Erickson.
Thank you. Um, the League of Minnesota Cities provides an excellent, uh, piece of communication related to, um, social media accounts. I would guess, uh, Councilor Attorney Costley has gone through this multiple times in municipal trainings. There's a lot of rules about it, which basically says, as elected officials, if you want to have an official account, then you have to make it public and you have to keep all that information open to the public. And they, they recommend and suggest you do not use your personal accounts to do those, because everyone has an equal right to access to those people. You can't have it be, um, approving friends or doing different thi- there, there's a lot of information. I want to say to Council Woodruff, I appreciate the, um, concern, and I think if, if it is opportunistic to be able to bring this back to public affairs and have a good conversation and refresh what we learned, um, at the league and get some additional recommendations from Attorney Costley, we can probably look at, um, clarifying and providing some more streamlined, um, follow-up. And again, it's, it's the follow-up that's important, right? It's making sure that we don't find ourselves in a situation where we're saying something or writing something that's not representative of the city. So I appreciate you, Council Woodruff, and hoping that, um, this could maybe, uh, move for further clarification and making sure that, at a minimum, we reaffirm what we're supposed to be doing.
Absolutely. That is the motion on the table as well, is to send it to Public Affairs for review, Council. Not that we are chopping it off at the head today. Go ahead, Council Glaser.
I believe, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, thank you. Um, I believe that some of this language is already addressed in the communication policy and the ethics policy, but once again, we can look at it and spend some more time reviewing it, but I think it's already out there, and I think the councilors should know that by now, but there it is.
Council Passy, you have something to add?
Yeah, I agree with Council Glaser, this is out there, there is a policy for using social media and to say any elected official cannot have a social media account is a violation of First Amendment, right?
Oh, absolutely. I don't think that that's where we're going. You can still have your social media accounts. It's just when you're representing it to yourself.
I think to Council, oh, I'm sorry, President Redden. To Council Woodruff's point and others, it's making sure that we have both self-monitoring and monitoring within the city to make sure we understand what our roles and responsibilities are. There's a difference between having an individual account and an account that represents the role that we're in. So I, I'm, I'm appreciative of where Council Woodruff is, has some questions.
If I could, I just want to clarify, because here we're accepting the recommendation of the Ethics Committee to refer to Public Affairs, the proposal to amend the city code to prohibit, and that's where I get really, really nervous. I don't like that. I would love Public Affairs to look it over, but I do not like the idea of prohibiting social media. I think we're all elected officials and adults, and we know our code of conduct. And that's where I would like them to tread lightly when they start looking into that, when this does get referred.
And, and I think to respond to, um, Council Redwell, I, I don't think we have to come out of that committee with that same. This is their recommendation, they're asking us to review it, and if we have a modified recommendation, I think we're welcome to do that.
Yeah, this is simply, uh, a recommendation made, um, from the Ad Hoc Ethics Committee to send to Public Affairs for review. Like I said, it's not, you know, you can adjourn it, or take it any way you want, but it gets to the Ethics Committee, or to the, uh, Public Affairs Committee. Any other discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glaser? Redwell?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Passy?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Redden?
Yes. All right, new business item number twelve. Oh, let's see here. Authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver an independent contractor agreement with Jose Leon to provide public access coordinator and camera operator services for the city.
So moved.
Second.
What?
The reason I ask that this be removed is, according to charter, the mayor's signature should be attested to by the city administrator.
Do we have that amended? I can make, I'll make that amendment.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I've heard this comment now quite a few times, and if, if we are taking the position that anything that clerk has attested in the past is improper, we better address that. Because everything that's been done since I've been here has been handled that way. So that gives me heartburn. And if that's, if that's what this council wants to do, I don't want to keep hearing that objection. We need to get this addressed, and set it.
I think, Mr. Chair, I think that's very fair. Um, I mean, I have concerns about some things in the code and the charter as well. I think that one should be addressed, and it seems it's simple to address, so, thank you.
Go ahead, Patty.
I do have an opinion, as I've stated to Mr. Passy in the past, from the previous city attorney, um, Steve Oberon, that, um, I had the authority, or a city clerk, and any city clerk, whoever would be sitting in this position, because we did have another one prior to, um, Dan Walker here.
And, Mr. Chair, that's...
I have the authority to do that, I'm sorry, Chris.
No, I thought you were done, I'm sorry. I mean, and, Mr. Chair, I think that's a common theme here, is, is I heard our city attorney come in, and one of the first things I heard, he said, we really need to go through our city code, because there's a lot of discrepancies, there's a lot of things that need to be cleaned up and looked at. Now, we've been going through our city code and our charter. It's, it's time to go and get it cleaned up. There's a lot of problems with it, bottom line. I don't think anybody wants to cause any problems, we just want to get it cleaned up, so, thank you.
In my mind, that there was, the city's a hundred years old, and there's been ample opportunity for the city to amend the charter or change the code to include a city clerk. It hasn't happened yet. If it's, if we have a city clerk, we need to amend the charter and the city code to so reflect that.
Just a second.
Do I have my charge to render an opinion?
You do, I mean?
No.
I, I thought it was already done, but did someone make a motion?
Yeah, there was a motion.
I just need, I, I apologize, Mr. Chair, I just need, I just need to know what motion is on the floor right now. I just need to know what motion is on the floor right now.
Okay. The current motion on the floor is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver an independent contract agreement with Jose Leon to provide public access coordinator and camera operation services for the city.
And I made a motion, and then Council Passy seconded it, correct?
Council Redwell seconded.
Yeah, Council Redwell seconded it, and we find that friendly with the changes that are needed.
And why are those changes?
Uh, currently, to have this contract signed between the mayor and, uh, the interim administrator. Now, we've also tasked Patty with being the deputy administrator, does that not give her the deputy functions?
We task the city clerk with that position.
Correct.
The city administrator is the city clerk, direct from city code.
I, I don't want to get in an argument here with Mr. Passy, but there is a contract that's been executed, it's a labor agreement, that's been co- that's been executed, uh, more than one series of negotiations. I gave that title, um, this is just another one of the harassing situations that I've been dealing with on a regular basis. I just want the public to know, um, from Council Passy and Council...
Wait, whoa, 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 Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair. I, I do, I do not think it's fair, when we're having an intellectual discussion, to call out a counselor. You've done that multiple times, Mrs. Norty. Please don't do that again. We're having a conversation.
Mr., Mr. Mayor?
It's not in the code. Tonight, you've heard arguments about code, you've heard arguments about the charter, and I'm being accused of a lot of violations of those, and meanwhile, there's a lot of things that are missing and not accurate. And so I think that we can...
Mr. Chair, you're talking about my performance in a public meeting, you're violating the law.
I'm not talking about your performance. I am talking about the fact that you should not be commenting on this. This is a dialogue for us to have, okay? I take this very seriously. I know for a fact that you've made some accusations, and I do not appreciate it.
Can I call for point of order, please?
Yep.
There's a motion on the floor.
There's a motion on the floor. I would like to know, so, the motion on the floor is from Mayor Swanson and Council Redwell. What is the current motion that you guys are discussing at this point?
Is that gonna be...
I think it's, yeah.
So currently, what you guys would like to do is just switch out the city clerk with the administrator, correct?
Yes.
Is that what I hear?
Yes.
Does anybody else have a comment on that?
I have one question.
Go ahead.
Could I, could I get, um, Attorney Costley's comments on where we're at with all of this?
With all of what?
I mean, is this something that we're gonna have to do ever since our attorney made it now?
That's why I've asked this council for a charge to render an opinion on the status of the clerk.
Thank you.
All right. So the way that I read this then is, uh, authorizing the mayor and city administrator to execute, deliver an independent contractor agreement with Jose Leon to provide public access coordinator and camera operator services for the city. Is that how you see it, Mr. Mayor?
I do.
Council Redwell?
Yep.
Find that friendly?
I do.
Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glaser?
No.
Redwell?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Passy?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Redden?
Yes.
All right, new business item number thirteen. Authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver a Minnesota Department of Transportation Agency agreement for federal airport expense reimbursement in the amount of thirty-two thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
I assume this is the exact argument?
Yes, it is.
All right, would the, uh, person that made the motion want to amend that anyway?
Yeah, I, that's fine, since we're gonna get, gonna get an opinion. I think it just makes sense to me, though.
So I now read this, authorizing the mayor and city administrator to execute and deliver the Minnesota Department of Transportation Agency agreement for federal airport expense reimbursement in the amount of thirty-two thousand dollars. Does that sound accurate?
Yeah.
Council Woodruff, does that sound accurate?
Yes.
Do you find that friendly?
I do.
Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glaser?
No.
Redwell?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Passy?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Redden?
Yes. That concludes our new business for today. Are there any announcements?
Thank you, Mr. President, yes, uh, it's been a long night, and I apologize, but I, I want to share. I haven't had a chance, um, to share my heart with this council. And after some time, I think tonight's the night, um, I just want to have this conversation and talk with each of you. I really miss the wonderful time this council had. Some of you guys remember when we could talk and work together on projects. I remember a time when we'd identify an... I remember a time when we'd identify an issue and we rolled up our sleeves. We turned over stones, as we always would say, and, and then we came up with a solution. It wasn't always perfect, but it sure seemed good. We created a place that people felt open and honest and could share, or felt open and honest and people could share. It was a very safe place. It led to some great times and great memories. I truly felt and could see the teamwork. Our community was complimenting us, complimenting us on the teamwork and constituents could see projects getting done. We no longer had people telling us they were frustrated with the plans that were not getting implemented in the city. Then along came this underwater hotel discussion. And needless to say, the past few months for me have, have been extremely humbling. I want to deeply apologize for the distractions that this has caused this council. Trust is a powerful thing and without trust, it becomes really hard and it becomes really slow to get any projects done. Tell me what we've been doing the last couple of months. Are we really feeling, are we really feeling like we're moving housing forward? Are we really feeling like we're moving waterfront stuff forward? Lots of stuff, lots of distractions. And again, I, I apologize. I want to, I want to say that no one on this council is responsible for the actions. So being the mayor, I own that. I've not had a chance to speak specifically to all these issues and I don't want you guys to feel like I'm being defensive or anything. I didn't want to come across as defensive. I didn't want to challenge the healthy structures and processes that are in place. I really believe in local government. I believe in our government and I want to make sure processes get followed. So I wanted to see those work their way out. Thankful for this opportunity to share tonight. I believed everything I was doing. I sought legal counsel. I can show you guys legal bills. I can show you the times I talked to Steve Oberon and Dan Walker. And I thought what I was doing was the right things, following the rules. And I'll explain more about that later. First, I love our community. When I first decided to run, it was because I felt that I had maybe a unique ability. I, I thought I could get our legislature on board with projects. I'd heard that in the past, that had happened a ton. I really thought I could work with our federally elected officials, state elected, all of our local folks. And yes, I have always had a big dream for our area. Some people say I'm a visionary. I do see a community that is, is fixed up, well taken care of. There's lots of jobs. Infrastructure's been repaired. We have our housing. Our community is exceptionally life-giving and it has a feeling that everyone is working together for its best good. In other words, we're all working together, team. I know it's a big idea and a big dream, but, and I knew we couldn't do this without every community member and everyone working together. And I saw that happening for quite a few years. I'm telling you today, I can't do that without you guys, every single one of you. I can't do this. We can't do this without each other. For those of you that don't know me, I'm an extremely curious person. I always have been. I'm going to be very vulnerable. I think I've shared this with you before, but every once in a while, I'll get over my skis. I'm going 100 miles an hour quite often. Any of you guys, do you ever see that out of me? I think you do. But I do love our town. I love the people in it. I know this has been an unsettling time for you. I want to simply address the concerns that have been brought up to me by constituents. First, I need to say, I have no conflicts of interest. I can tell you, you will never find a conflict of interest because I know what it means. I can say I got confused between one attorney and another in terms of how they read it and what they were saying about it. It wasn't always clear to me in the past. But I have no conflicts of interest. Okay? I have not asked the city for anything. And if I have, bring it forward, show it to me. But I have not had a conflict of interest, nor do I plan on having any. I spend a lot of time and energy keeping this stuff separate. I understood the past attorney said it was when an ask was made. In other words, if you came to the council and said, "I want a project or dollars or I have a financial interest," that's what I understood a conflict of interest is. I believe the current attorney is saying the similar thing. But again, none of those things have happened. I will tell you unequivocally, neither me or my family members have taken a grant from the City of Two Harbors. We have not. I know there's a state audit. You will not see any grant money going to myself or our family members. In fact, I have a copy of an email where our family, I wrote the email saying we would not be participating in the grant process that the City of Two Harbors was putting on during pandemic. That is absolutely 100% unequivocally the truth. I don't want to do that. I do not want to create a problem or take away from other people. Yes, I've worked on numerous nonprofits. I've promoted nonprofits. I can tell you, I've never been paid one time. I'm 100% a volunteer board member. In my world, nonprofits are not businesses. I have promoted all of them. I, I could tell you that I promoted those thinking that those were good things for the community, good community activities. I have paid for advertising out of my pocket as a donation. I have made donations personally, some of those things. The first thing I want to address tonight is this idea of the underwater hotel. I don't want to come across tonight as being defensive. I'm just going to share with you and hopefully I cover a lot of bases. First of all, yes, this was an idea stage. Like I said, I'm naturally curious, so I was looking at numerous options and opportunities for our community. I have, and I've had lots of conversations, interesting conversations. A majority of them, people that are truly kicking tires and never have any interest in getting something done. But lots of people talk to when you're mayor. I had met this Mr. O and we started talking about my deep passion for Two Harbors. Talked about the neat venues I'd like to see around our community. I love seeing things fixed up. I love what's going on. And this led to a lot of discussions around maybe something that was a little bigger than what we'd ever seen or heard before. And so I was trying to find out if there was interest in a project like this. I want to be clear again. The City of Two Harbors was never asked for anything by myself. It was completely ideation, as we call it, kicking around, guys in the garage, people having discussion, trying to figure out, would this be an idea that would even work or would people even be interested in? I didn't ask for anything from the City of Two Harbors. Tim, I'm not throwing you under the bus here, but I sat in their office and we had a meeting and there was witnesses present and I told you about this, Mr. O, and the economic development project. I think that was important to share because I don't know that people know that. The location of the project that was being discussed, it was being talked about in the water. Under state law, the water is not owned by the City of Two Harbors. Legally, this is outside city limits. I made the motion and sent it to the Attorney General's office for review because I believe and still believe in process. I also knew from my understanding of conflicts that that only occurs when the counselor, mayor, elected official is asking the city for something, contract money, et cetera. In fact, I sent that to the newspaper, verbatim, quote. To those who want to know why I created an LLC is because I create LLCs all the time. It, for me, it's like buying domain names, if anybody knows what that means. It's really easy to buy a domain name. It's really easy to create an LLC because LLCs are limited liability companies, which means that if you ever need to use that shell, that legal document or that legal entity, it gives you legal protection. That's just business. That's, that's the way it works. This was a plain and simple economic development project. Mayors and across Minnesota participate in these all the time. We got to promote our communities. And again, I'm sorry if that seemed crazy and out of this world. Never, I didn't have ill will. I wasn't trying to create any sort of bad situations or, or anything for our community. I want you all to know that on the council. City communication policy. My understanding, when I read that document and I've had other people read that document, is I'm not supposed to represent the city. I know there's some stuff coming up here in the near future with the city attorney. Speaking of myself or my entity or whatever, but my own opinion. You guys all know this. I've been on social media as a mayor for over five years. I did get access to my Facebook page, to city staff, to city staff member Nurdie, who oversees making sure we as elected officials are following the rules. And if she, based on the job description that she understands that she has, that her job is to oversee the code. It would be safe to assume I was doing all things properly based on five years. My council date back to when I got elected. You can go look at those dates. Again, no, no issues were ever identified before this spotlight was on. I'm open to learning. I'm open to understanding what I can do better to communicate better. And I understand I started communicating about cryptocurrency, which a lot of people don't understand. But even our president has been tweeting about cryptocurrency lately. Performing Arts Center. The City of Two Harbors has never had a contract with a nonprofit, Friends of the Banjell Park Performing Arts Center. And the Ask Garage starts to help with a sustainable model for the Performing Arts Center, business plan, business models, well, and many other tasks. I asked the then-city attorney and he said, "I should stay out of the city means regards to this discussion." I did that. Working with the former city attorney, I understood that my conflict would occur when and if an ask was made of the city. Okay? We're in a small town. People help each other out. Businesses help each other out, whether you're selling lumber, serving food or doing whatever. It's, everything is kind of interconnected. I think we all know that. Here's what I want to deeply apologize about, apologize to the community about. I emailed using my mayor email account. I should have not have done that. I don't know what I use, why I use that email, because I know Mark Johnson personally. I think it was something I did out of haste and I, again, I am 100% accepting fault for that. I probably did a quick email and grabbed the wrong email address. I am deeply sorry for that mistake. I do want to disclose that at this time, Mark Johnson, Mr. Johnson, knew who it was. We were fairly close. I have been, or I had been at the time on the Two Harbors Area Fund Foundation. I had been raising money for the Two Harbors Area Fund. Some of you may remember that we've had a big party out here raising money for the Two Harbors Area Fund while I was a board member. It was a major event and it was in his honor. So Mr. Johnson knew that I was a mayor. There wasn't anything that was new to him and, and he was being fooled by the fact that I was a mayor, a person. But I just wanted to share that, that as a disclosure, I had been fundraising. We did raise a lot of money for the Two Harbors Area Fund. Which, by the way, in case you're wondering, yes, goes into a lot of local nonprofits through their grant process. We talked about toll ships tonight. I can unequivocally tell you, I have never had a contract for toll ships. I have not had an interest financially in toll ships. I have never discussed a contract with toll ships. Did I roll out the red carpet? When I got the call, I said, "I would love to see this happen in Two Harbors." Yes, I did. But I said, "This has to be approved by the city council. It has to go to the council and they have to give it a thumbs up." I do see it as an opportunity for our town to come together and for a major economic development. I hope that we can come together and really make it special. You know, again, there was no contract between the promoter or the promoter and the city. I had no financial interest in that. I don't have a conflict. I love the idea of us celebrating sales in our harbor, because I'm a bit of a history nerd. And I love that our harbor once had many sales in it. And that's a big reason why I got really excited about this project. It's pretty amazing, the sales that we'll see this summer. And it's pretty cool that that's tied way back to some of our history. I recognize I have a website by Two Harbors. That website was established with the hopes of showcasing the cool things for interested businesses that want to make investment into our community. I love being able to showcase all that's going on. I think it's so cool when a town like Two Harbors and all the cool things are happening. To hear the good news tonight was fun, too. There's so many fun restoration and building projects that are going on for a town our size. It's pretty amazing. I said earlier, the president has recently tweeted how he sees cryptocurrency as the future. I just, you know, I didn't think that people would think that I was making an official statement for the City of Two Harbors. Nonprofits. I have assisted with the start of many organizations and businesses, many nonprofits. People come to me all the time asking how to do this. I do it probably weekly. I share within the process. I've helped sign off on some of these. Again, I want to reiterate, I do not take pay as a board member on any nonprofits and never have. In all of our boards that I serve on, there's a conflict of interest policy. Nonprofits are required to have those. And I don't have any conflicts of interest per their policies. I do promote all these nonprofits. I have helped, again, advertise, spend money. I feel strongly that these mission-driven organizations are really important to our community, as important as businesses. Lou's Fish House. This one really hurts. Yes, I sat down with Mr. Ensign. I love helping people get into business. I run into a lot of people that tell me they're interested in doing my business. I always encourage them, every time. If you sat down with me, I would tell you, "Go for it. Go get it done." But I know in the back of my mind that if 1% of people actually do it, it'd be amazing. My wife hired a company out of Duluth because she wanted to own commercial property. She put a purchase agreement down on property in town, different than where Lou's Fish House is located. And in May of '17 is when Mr. Ensign said I met with him. My wife acquired that property in February 2018. I can tell you that she formed her company because she was planning on buying the building. It did not happen. Many, many, many months went by. Mr. Ensign's idea for a business was to open some sort of gift shops and, and something like that. In wanting to restore our community, wanting to restore that building and my wife wanting to be in project management, of which she's 100% owner of that business, she fixed that place up. And I have, I can tell you, I have people that can tell you that there was not even a plan to have a fish house there or smoked fish. That came very late into the game when somebody who had smoked fish for Lou's Fish House called and said, "Hey, we smoked fish for Lou's before. We could do that for you." While I understand, I had actually talked to Mr. Ensign, I think it was girlfriend at the time. I explained to her what had happened. It was a surprise when she called me. I explained to her that this is my wife and daughter's business. They're the ones that run it. Anybody that knows or has worked over there knows that that's the case. I'm proud of them. This is a woman-owned business. This is not Chris Swanson's business. It's very frustrating that people would say that. I love that that place is fixed up. And I don't think you can expect somebody, when they come to you and say they want to purchase your house eight or nine months later, if they still haven't made a purchase agreement, to think that they're super serious. And I'm sorry, Mr. Ensign, but that's how business works. You got to show that you're serious. Talking about the state auditor, I've never received any money from the City of Two Harbors and then other than my pay as mayor. By the way, we should talk about that. When grant money for businesses became available, we talked about this earlier. I sent an email. I have a copy of it saying, "I will not participate, nor will my family." We've never taken grants. I do not have any knowledge of asking anything from the City of Two Harbors. All this being said, I do have a big dream for our community and I recognize I can't do this on my own. I think that's how I got tangled up. I was trying to do too much on my own and I should have been coming to the council to ask for help, letting you know what was going on. I need your help. To see the vibrant, life-giving community that we all dream of, it's going to take all of us working together. Here's just some of the positive projects we have teamed up on. You know, we got to 1%, we raised a half a percent, but we got a sales tax for infrastructure. I think Miranda can attest to this. I believe it's close to raising over a million dollars already. That money goes directly into sewer pipes, water pipes and infrastructure so that we can keep the costs of our road rebuilds down. There was a lot of people that wanted to see, to see visitors coming up the area being, having to go through Tollbooths. But instead, we decided to go this route and it was overly supportive in the community and people got behind it and it's been awesome. I remember a time when Lake County and the City of Two Harbors relationship wasn't strong. We've worked really well together now. I'm really proud of that. As you guys saw, we had a major project we did last year, the A Street Project. That was a $4.5 million project that we worked out of Lake County and people loved it. I know we're still working through finishing some of that, but it's, it was a great project together. We're working on getting the DNR land here down the waterfront transferred to us. DNR, a long time ago, promised us Marina and that didn't happen and now we're asking for that land back and I think it's going to happen. It's a good thing. $33.5 million, guys. 11.5 state... 11.5 state grant. What a great team effort. 3.5 federal grant. That just, we just got that announced recently, even though we'll see how we can use that. That's a $33.5 million wastewater treatment plant so that we can make sure that we get the housing that we need. $6 million water plant project upgrades. That's going to have a cool overlook. I know we've been working on that, where you can basically walk up on the tank and look over Lake Superior. It's going to be an amazing project. We're building trails, Odegaard Boot, I think this summer. We have, our CIP is being implemented. We have alley projects, sidewalk projects this year. Just tonight, we passed a $50,000 annual sidewalk budget. You know, a couple of years ago, Mindup came in and put $2 million in new signals and striping lanes, which I've heard from a lot of you is way better. But guess what? In four years, they're coming back in and put $6.5 million for a complete rebuild. They're going to, it's going to be beautiful when it's done. All the aesthetics we're hoping for. But underneath, all the broken road is going to get fixed. It's pretty amazing. There's opportunities for trails and other things we've been trying to do for years. The county's talking to us about 4.5 million for Fifth Street. If anybody's driven up from Seventh Avenue, we've headed, it'd be south down Fifth Street. You know how bad that road is. The city is looking at all Sixth Avenue being rebuilt with that, as well as a portion of Fifth Avenue. That is a big broken road. That's going to be awesome. We've had a golf course that's gotten out of debt. It's making profit. Liquor stores had record profits, our cambrons had record profits. Those dollars go help our community in many ways, roads, other things that we try to do. We've had record permits for home restoration projects. Our $500 grant program is running strong. I've had a ton of people tell me how much they love that. We now have Loving Lake County, which is a 4% lodging tax in the county, 5% within city limits. 1% of that goes to energy. It's pretty amazing. We're going to get that tub fixed up. I know they've been working on it. It's pretty cool. New businesses and restoration. Forgive me because I'm not sure if these are the exact numbers, but I heard the hospital was 15 million in the last five years. Think about this. First Baptist Church, 1.2 million. Burlington Station, 1.7. Lou's, I don't have the number for that. Quick Trip. Superior Fines. Harbor Rail Loft Project and just Harbor Rails, that's just a beautiful building. McQuade's Pub and Grill up on 61. Two new dentist's office. Lou's Vegetarian Gourmet. Castle Danger's expanded. Port City Nutrition. North Shore Title, I think it was 630 lofts, if I heard tonight. Lots and lots of stuff. I'm probably missing something. I feel bad, but there's lots of stuff that's happened. So my question for all you guys, where do you want to go next? I heard our council staff loud and clear, we want to work on housing and waterfront and some parking improvement, maybe a splash pad. Let's continue to get this great work done on our roads and sidewalks. I'm hoping we can build trust and come back together. If we can't come together, then I just don't want to be mayor anymore. Because I don't like working against each other. I want to work together. I love working together. I'm open to that and I look forward to a bigger discussion with everybody and hopefully State of the City coming soon. More questions can be answered during that time. Mr. Chair, I'll finish up with this. Tonight, we approved sidewalks and the infrastructure. Awesome job. Working hard to get DNR land from the waterfront. Center Park is really wanting to finish strong with that project. I know Counselor Erickson has been working on that too. I heard about the Tipsy Mosquito tonight. I think that's right, Tipsy Mosquito? Wow. Cedar Coffee's adding on to their facility. Wastewater Treatment Plant Project's moving right along. And we have Counselor Passy going down to Capitol, or actually is going to be virtually going to the Capitol to tackle our Horrible Vortex bill. You know, it was just a little over last year, we had that natural disaster. The gas bills went through the roof. The investigations occurred and we know that that was something that was beyond anybody's here control. And they're going to go back and now Counselor Passy is lobbying to go to, was lobbying to get a tax credit for every residential gas owner, as well as every business gas owner. That's good work. And I'm so proud of this council and the things we've gotten done. If you guys have questions of me, I'm more than willing to answer. But I can tell you, I'm ready. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair? Yes. Here's where I'd like to go. It's not the attorney's job to get engaged in factual discussion. But what I don't appreciate is a comment to say, I'm not going to throw you under the bus. And I want to clarify this with the council. It's very important to me. I've worked very hard in this process to be impartial and be fair. I think if you read my memorandum of opinion, I hope you'll find that I have not taken anything on context, I have not taken a fact that doesn't exist. I've only taken what's been presented to this council. And for the mayor to say that I was aware of Mr. Oh, that I knew something about an underwater hotel project is an incorrect statement. My recollection of that conversation is very clear. Mr. Mayor, you mentioned the possibility of an underwater hotel. And my comment, I believe exactly was, that's a pipe dream that will never happen. So to imply that I knew something beforehand or that I was involved with Mr. Oh or knew that that was part of what was going on, I want this council to be clear that that is not true. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I also have just a clarification. I think Chris will probably agree to this, but I just want to clear that I did ask you to remove me from your social media account prior to you posting the stuff about Mr. Oh or whatever. Recently, probably over a year ago, I don't remember. I think it was when Dan was still here, I asked for you to be off of that account. And the only reason that I asked for you to be off of it is because when you were engaging with people late in the evening, like 11, 12 o'clock, my phone was buzzing and it was driving me crazy. So I asked you to be off. And I want you to clarify with the public that I was not on when you were doing things that are, that were being questioned.
Yeah, no, that's very true.
I recollect over a year ago, I was in that conversation as well.
Right. I just don't want, I just don't want people, I don't want it to be implied that I was aware of those things and didn't act on them because I was not. Is that a correct statement?
Yeah, that's very, that's very fair.
Thank you.
I should have clarified that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Okay. I'd also like to invite everybody here. We've all heard that Highway 61 is going to be getting reconstructed. There's an opportunity to see what the concepts are and get some, have some input to it tomorrow, March 29th at 11 o'clock, the Lake County Highway Building, or March 29th tomorrow at 4:00 PM at the Lake County Highway Building. And actually, in a concession to people who are challenged with COVID, there's a virtual opportunities on Wednesday and Thursday also. So please take a look at concepts. There's some really surprising concepts that will really do some good for the Highway 61 corridor through the town, that serves the people, serves the tourists that are going through, and also will help the city to keep people in the city.
That's what we need to invest in.